Can she hear us? District one. Okay.
She's having some technical difficulties.
So we have a visual on Supervisor Horstman from District one, who is current Chair of the Board. Let's see if she comes on.
Can you hear me? I hear you.
All right. Roll call District one.
I am here. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
That would be good. So, great. But District one, Patrice Horstman. Unfortunately, I am traveling back for family business, and I am here virtually. And hopefully, technology will be good to us tonight. So, good to see you all virtually.
Thank you. District two, Jeronimo Vasquez, Supervisor for District two and current Vice Chair of the Board, covering for our Chairs in person. District three.
Good evening, everyone. Tammy Ontiveros, District three.
District four.
Yate, everyone, thank you for being here tonight for our special meeting. My name is Judy Begay. I'm the District four Supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. District five.
Yes, Selena Fowler, District five. Welcome.
Thank you. All right, now, could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. Now, we will have called to the public to allow for any comments from the public. Please note that issues presented during the call to the public that are not on the agenda cannot be acted on by the Board of Supervisors. For items not on the agenda, individual Supervisors may ask questions of the public, but are prohibited by open meeting law from discussing or considering the item. Only the Speaker who has been called upon is authorized to speak. To encourage and respect expression of all views, we ask that there are no disruptions. Individuals are limited to three minutes for their comments. Clerk Daly will explain how the public can provide comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez. At this time, if anyone would like to provide a comment, we do have comment cards on the table, and there aren't that many people here, so you can also start to make your way up to the podium. Like Vice Chair said, it's three minutes that'll be on the clock, and the light will turn green and then red when the three minutes is up. We also have a board comments@coconino.az.gov email if there's anyone that's watching the stream that would like to send in a comment as well. As a note, if there's anyone here to provide comment on our public hearing items, we will open that for public hearing and comments specific to those public hearing items at that time when we get to that item. So if there's anyone that would like to provide comment right now, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium. And at this time, Vice Chair, we do not have any comment cards, and no one has made their way up to provide comment.
Okay, we'll give it one minute to see if anybody emerges in the virtual world before we move on.
And there are no comments in the comment box, Vice Chair.
All right, thank you. In that case, we'll move on to the Board of Supervisors' consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by a single motion. Are there any items that Board members want to consider separately? Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you for doing this today. Really appreciate you filling in. I know this is going to be a long meeting, so thank you. On the consent agenda, I would like to remove items number five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 13, 22, and 24. And that's it.
Okay. Are there any other items that haven't been called yet that other Supervisors would like to pull? Supervisor Fowler.
Number 12.
Number 12? Are there any other items on the consent agenda that folks would like to pull? Okay, in that case, I'll make sure I got all the numbers right. Did I get a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
I would be happy to make a motion to approve the very lengthy consent agenda and removing items, exclusive of items, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 22, and 24.
Okay, we have a motion by Chair Horstman and a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Consent agenda is passed. We get all the way through, at least into the 30s. No, into the 40s on our agenda, so that's good. So coming back, I've had a special request to reorder the agenda for you, for the ones that asked for and wanted to consider number 10 first for consideration and possible action to approve a funding agreement with the Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra to provide a total of $6,000 from community initiative funds, 1,200 from District one, 2,000 from District two, 2,300 from District three, and 500 from District four to help provide an annual free, family-friendly patriotic concert held on 4th of July at the Pepsi Amphitheater. Supervisor Ontiveros, would you like to talk on this or speak on this?
Well, yes, I would, although I wasn't the one that pulled it.
Ah, who pulled it? I'm sorry. It was Supervisor Horstman.
But I can speak. I did, but I'd be more than happy to yield this to Supervisor Ontiveros.
All right, thank you, Chair Horstman. Well, this is, of course, in District three, as we all know. And I think that this is... I love these community events that we can have. First of all, I love Independence Day. I love these community events, and I am very supportive of the Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra. And I'm hoping that there is someone... Is there someone in the audience here? Thank you, that could even come up and speak briefly about the events of this evening. So with that, I have not met you, but Vice Chair Vasquez, would it be appropriate to have her come up?
Yes, it would. Please come up.
Yeah.
In fact, I believe you're on a time schedule, so that's why we moved up forward. So please, give us your comments.
Yeah, and if you could please introduce yourself and give us the agenda for the evening, or the day.
Thank you so much. My name is Michelle Walker, Executive Director of the Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra. And I first want to say a very deep thank you from FSO for your willingness to even consider this grant proposal from us. Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra just completed their 75th season. We have been a cultural part of this community for a long, long time. And we provide concerts throughout the year, but our biggest access point for the community is the July 4th concert. It is completely free. And we not only provide classical music at this, but it's also patriotic. The first half of the concert features patriotic tunes. We acknowledge the veterans and those who have served, who are in the audience. And then the second half of the concert is a way to hopefully get people excited about the arts and classical music, because we include popular classical tunes as well as some previews of our season. We typically draw between 1,500 and 2,000 people, and we're hoping that this year will be closer to that 2,000. We draw people from all over northern Arizona, and we are, again, so grateful that you are helping us put this program on for our community, because it really is a wonderful access point for classical music and the arts in northern Arizona.
Thank you for those comments. And could you tell us what time it starts?
It starts at 3:00 PM out at Pepsi Amphitheater. Doors open at 2:00 PM.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and very nice meeting you. And thank you for the work that you do in our community.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, so can we get a motion for item 10 to consider approv...
Can I make a comment if I'm... Oh, you want to...
Yeah, Supervisor Horstman first.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment just real quick, unless you wanted to take the motion first. It's up to you, obviously. So... But if not, I'll just make my comment. You know, first and foremost, this is really a wonderful, wonderful symphony, 4th of July celebration. And I really urge our community members to come on out and be part of this. It's just lovely. And Michelle, thank you so much for being here on behalf of Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra. You know, one of my favorites, and certainly been 75 seasons. That's really hard to believe. And just a great congratulations to you and Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra. And really, you all need to come out and celebrate, because it's also Supervisor Begay's birthday. So I'm sure that we can all do a big hearty happy birthday to Supervisor Begay for this as well. So that's my comments, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate the Symphony for continuing to do this 4th of July event. Several years ago, Supervisor Carl Taylor was part of the chorus, and he started this event on the 4th of July. It was the first time that the Board funded that event, and since then, it's continued. So I really appreciate that. I apologize, I didn't contribute to it, but it's a wonderful event, and I just want to thank the Symphony for continuing this event for the public. And just want to remember Carl Taylor, who was the county Supervisor who started this event. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Supervisor Begay.
I just want to thank Michelle, your staff, whoever helped you put this thing together, you know, and for the community out there. I think it's very important that we have these kind of functions out there for our people, so that, you know, we have to be united, and, you know, we work together and certainly be there for one another, you know, in all these community initiatives that we have. And I just want to say thank you so much for taking part and running with it. So, and I think also, you know, I... The other people... I know there's a lot of tourists that go there. I went to one, I think it was two years ago, and I just walked through there. I just looked around, and there's so many diverse... We're always about diversity, and I think it's very important too. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And, yeah, I just wanted to state that, as my colleagues have already stated, thank you. But also, we as Supervisors have community initiative funds, and these are the kinds of efforts that we want to use these funds, you know, for the most people possible. So a huge concert, you know, we go through a public benefit process when doing this to screen if they're appropriate. These are the kinds of things that are that public benefit. And so it's really exciting to be able to support this event and look forward to being there on 4th of July. So, thank you. With that, can I get a motion to approve this number 10?
Yep. I'll second.
Or did I have to read the whole thing?
I was going to, but...
Yeah, go ahead and make your motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we approve a funding agreement with Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra to provide a total of $6,000 from community initiative funds, 1,200 from District one, 2,000 from District two, 2,300 from District three, and 500 from District four to help provide an annual free, family-friendly patriotic concert held on July 4th at Pepsi Amphitheater.
Thank you. We have a second by Supervisor... A motion by Supervisor Ontiveros. Do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to item number five. Consideration and possible action to approve resolution 2025-34, supporting public lands. And with that, I'll pass it over to Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, members of the Board. I asked to have this on to join an ever-growing body, especially of western counties in support of our public lands. I think, as many of us know, the Senate released a text of their budget bill, which included a proposal to sell 3 million acres of public lands. Having reviewed that, Outdoor Alliance released a map showing possibility of 300 million acres of public lands that could, in fact, be opened for such a proposed sale. I do understand that Senator Lee has revised his bill with regards to the selling of public lands. However, it still allows for the sale of public lands. And I know we, as the Board of Supervisors and we here in Coconino County, deeply value our public lands. We are mostly, as you know, public lands in a public land county. They have contributed to our economy, our recreation, our culture. They hold spiritual significance. And we recognize that our public lands, which is what the word implies, is intended to be open to all, regardless of one's social, economic group, their status, their race, or their gender. It is the most democratic thing we have other than our right to vote, is our public lands and the enjoyment of our public lands. And this resolution joins, as I said, a number of other counties, especially a lot here in the West, making it very clear that we acknowledge the significance of our public lands and the importance to maintain our public lands to enjoy now and for future generations. And so I am going to ask the Board, first of all, make a motion for us to consider this resolution and to pass this resolution. I understand there's been a couple of minor grammatical changes that have been made, and I think those are before the Board. And I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution that's in the Board Packet for consideration and passage.
Okay. Are we going to hear the resolution? Are we going to read it for the record?
It's a consent agenda. If you'd like me to, I can. Or maybe we can get Kim or Erica to read it.
I would like to... Have the changes taken place since the Board Packet was released? If so, I would like to know what the changes are, please.
Good afternoon, Andy Bertelson County Manager. In terms of the resolution, the proposed changes are from District five Supervisor Lena Fowler, and they're grammatical in nature, adjectives, actions, if you will. So, under "public lands," statement of support, now therefore be it resolved that the Coconino County Board of Supervisors of Coconino hereby... So on number one, where it notes expresses its strong support for the continued federal management and stewardship of public lands within Coconino County, Supervisor Fowler proposes a firm strong support for the continued federal management and stewardship of public lands within Coconino County. Under number four, currently, it reads, "We ask you to fully fund our public lands." Supervisor Fowler proposes, urges full federal funding for public land management. So that change is recommended by Supervisor Fowler. And then number six, urges federal land management agencies to continue their collaborative efforts with local communities. Supervisor Fowler notes, calls on federal land management agencies to maintain and strengthen collaboration with local communities, tribal nations, stakeholders, et cetera. So, those are the proposed changes. They're not hugely substantive in nature, but more action-oriented, if you will. So...
Could I ask who wrote the original one, please?
The Center for Public Lands wrote the original, and that's where the resolution has derived from. It's a national effort organized by the national organizations to encourage the protection of our federal lands.
So that is one of NACO's public lands?
Yeah, and the Center for Public Lands as well. Yes, yes, sir.
Supervisor Ontiveros, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't. The reason I asked who wrote it was I wanted to know their thoughts on the changes, on the modifications.
If I may, Supervisor Ontiveros.
Supervisor Chair Horstman? Did you want to...
Sure. Having been involved in it, I will tell you that I have no problem with the recommendations that were made by Supervisor Fowler. I do not think it is... They're substantive in nature, and I don't think it changes the tenor or the resolution. And so I don't have any objection to those changes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from Board members at this time? Okay, in that case, Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you for accepting the proposed changes. And I am very supportive of... And the Board of Supervisors has been very supportive and protective of our public lands. In 2016, the state of Arizona and several other states had proposed to transfer some public lands to the state. The Board of Supervisors opposed that. Our national monuments, when they're being proposed, the Board of Supervisors have been very supportive. So, in our county and as our Board of Supervisors, we've always valued our public lands. Rather than reducing the public lands, we have created positive, strong partnerships with all federal lands agencies, with the state lands, as well as tribes. And that's how we approach our public lands. Public lands are for all Americans, and we are a tourism community. So therefore, very much so, as states in the resolution supports our economic opportunities that are here, and it also supports just the revenue that we have, and that's where it comes from. We want to make sure that our environment still stays safe, our cultural heritage. We, as Native Americans, we have six tribes here, and other tribes come to our region to make offerings, to be able to access herbs and being able to collect food that they traditionally, the original inhabitants, have done for many years. And we want to continue that. We even have our public lands, the value, in our comprehensive plans and our area plans as well. So with that, we want to make sure that we continue to support public lands. And I'm really happy that this resolution is before us. And the other concern with this proposal is there is a lack of transparency and a lack of local control. We don't have input into what is being proposed. It is just arbitrarily proposed, and we don't even know where the lands are being proposed. So I think that if they're going to do that, they really need to work with us. So, thank you for bringing this to our Board, and I fully support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from Board members? Supervisor Begay.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for getting a resolution to the NACO Board. And I think it's important that we maintain our public lands and ensure that, you know, we have access to it. And as Supervisor Fowler said, you know, that's where we get food and we get herbs, you know, for healing. And there's a lot of things that goes along with that. And that's just only the traditional aspect of it. But there... And then we have, like, tourism and everything else that we, you know, is there, you know. And we do get dollars, and so that's where we are with the dwindling of dollars that are going. You know, we really, we need to hold on to everything that we can hang on to, so as far as getting dollars. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And before we take a motion, so I can make my comments, I just want to say I'm in support of this resolution that, you know, our public lands are really important. And if you've noticed, areas that have been allowed to be developed, those areas are... Their beauty, their natural beauty are lost. The ecosystems are destroyed. And once you destroy those ecosystems, it's really hard to get it back, if at all. And so, we are an outdoor recreation economy. We are not a, what you call it, an extraction economy in this county. And so, it doesn't make sense to allow our public lands to become victims of extraction industries when we are a recreation economy. And so, again, I'm in full support of this resolution. And we... Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Supervisor Horstman.
I believe I made that motion. I'd look... Would appreciate a second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sorry, Vice Chair. If we can just have the motion reflect the changes that... And County Manager Bertelson.
Supervisor Horstman, if you could read the...
I will try my very best. Yes, the resolution as presented and is in our Packet with modifications on page two under the "now therefore" section. Number one, instead of expresses, the very first word is affirms its strong support. Likewise, on number four, we ask you... Number four, which reads currently, we ask you to say... Is modified to say urges full, fully funding our public lands. And then the last one is number six. Instead of the word urges federal land management agencies, it should read calls for federal land management agencies to continue their collective efforts. I believe that is the modifications. Otherwise, the resolution as presented is what I am making the motion on with the amendments as I've just set forth.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. And there's one additional amendment to number six, with local communities, comma, tribal nations is a proposed addition, comma, stakeholders and other government partners.
Then I would change my motion to include that modification as well.
All right. We have a motion by Chair Horstman and a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Are there any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Okay, thank you. Number six, consideration and possible action to approve a funding agreement with the Grand Canyon Youth to provide a total of $5,000 from community initiative funds, 1750 from District one, 1,000 from District two, 1,000 from District three, 750 from District four, and 500 from District five to support introductory one-day kayaking expeditions for all fifth-grade classes from four Title I Flagstaff schools, including Killip Elementary School, Ponte de Hojo, Kenzie Elementary School, and Marshall Elementary School.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may?
Yes, Supervisor Horstman.
And first and foremost, I believe that Claire Magnusson and Emma Wharton are there. Both, of course, are part of Grand Canyon Youth. We may want to hear from them. But once again, we just were talking about public lands and the importance of our public lands and what they provide to our community, the education, the culture, et cetera. And one of the places it really exemplifies being able to get our children in and appreciative of our public lands and out and enjoying our recreation and our beauty and learning about our world and the sustainability and the conservation necessary to maintain our world is Grand Canyon Youth. And, you know, as you correctly stated, Vice Chair, our CI funds are to help our community. These are the kinds of events and the kinds of activities that we, the Board, really appreciate our community partners in providing for all of our residents. And we certainly appreciate being able to be a part of that in a very small way through our CI funds. So with that, Vice Chair, if it works for you, maybe you can see if Claire Magnusson or Emma Wharton can provide some more information on this.
Yes, we do have, I believe it's Claire?
Claire Magnusson.
Claire Magnusson at the podium, please. The floor is yours.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Claire Magnusson. I'm the Development Director at Grand Canyon Youth. And we have... I'm the Development Director at Grand Canyon Youth, and we have not been around for 75 years, but we have been around since 1998, so we've been a part of this community for a long time. One of the programs that has been growing because we, we think it's sort of the introductory, really accessible way for especially young people in our community, like fifth grade young 10-year-olds, to experience rivers, is our Verde programs down right outside of Clarkdale Cottonwood area. And these trips are, I would say, so much more than just a fun day on the water. Grand Canyon Youth provides a ton of support before the expedition, so we go to these schools. We meet with the youth, we meet with families, we have Q and A sessions with teachers and families multiple times before the expeditions. We have free equipment that youth can borrow, everything they'd need, and they can just borrow it for free at our offices. We then, on the expeditions, we provide, these are like all youth expeditions, really youth-focused, they have youth-focused curriculum, and on these expeditions, we often provide transportation from Flagstaff down to the Verde. We work with the schools on what they need. We often provide lunch, and then we teach, each kid gets their own kayak, and we teach each kid how to paddle down the Verde, so they get sort of this independent experience, sort of to grow and build a little confidence when they're with their peers. And we work really, really hard to make accommodations, including providing one-on-one aids, and we do really thorough health follow-ups with each youth to be sure that we're bringing them into a situation that is, is really supportive. So I think something that we, we really try to make our expeditions really intentional and really supportive for these kids, which, and then we, but then we start to see these young people come back and do stuff that's maybe an overnight trip, you know, they, they're building sort of that trust and that confidence, and also their families are supportive, and so then, yeah, it, we're, we're sort of growing the, the community of young people that have seen the rivers in our areas, we're providing that access. So, yeah, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions if we'll have them.
Supervisor Ontiveros.
Well, thank you for that really great explanation of what you do, and I'm very familiar with this area. In fact, I've kayaked the Verde. I know where you're, I know where you're leaving from. How far are you going down the Verde? Where, where are you getting off at?
So we're starting at the Tapco put-in, and we're taking out at the Tuzi Goot takeout. So it's the section right outside of Clarkdale.
Okay, yeah, I know exactly where that's at. That is going to be a wonderful, wonderful experience for this group of kids, so thank you for your willingness to do this.
Are there any other comments from board members? Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you for your continued support of our young, young people in our, our communities. Really appreciate all the programs that you, that you put on, and it really truly does change their lives and sometimes gives them direction, so thank you.
Thank you, yeah, we really believe that.
Supervisor Brigade.
I just want to add on that intervention means a lot to the kids, and with this time and age, you know, we really need to do that. We really need to help them, you know, kind of help them along, and just a lot of intervention is something that they really need, you know, all the way across, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. Supervisor Horseman, did you have comments, or did you already make your comments?
The only thing I was going to say is, can we go along with? It sounds like a lot of fun, and really, Claire, really appreciate all that you do and that Grand Canyon Youth does. We are so lucky to have an organization like Grand Canyon Youth for our young people. I do believe it also changes lives, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I, as someone who worked 14 years in, in elementary school and worked with lots of fifth graders, I know how valuable these kind of experiences are for them, and I too want to join on this trip because you guys have done this in the four years since I left, so I never got to do this trip with you guys. Normally I would chaperone, so, but no, we're just really excited that the kids get this opportunity.
Absolutely.
You know, it, these are the kinds of moments that maybe they've never been exposed to, maybe they've never even complen, com, contemplated, you know, water ecosystems or whatnot, and so it's a way of just opening up their horizons and giving them that opportunity, so thank you.
You're so welcome.
Mr. Chair, I'd make, Vice Chair, I'd make a motion for us to approve the funding agreement with Grand Canyon Ruth, Grand Canyon Youth, now, now it's catchy, Vice Chair, Grand Canyon Youth to provide a total of 5,000 from our community initiative funds in the amounts as set forth in our agenda to support the introductory one-day kayaking expedition for all fifth grader classes from four Title I Flagstaff schools that have all been set forth in our agenda, and that is my motion.
I would like to second that.
We have a motion by Chair Horseman, a second by Supervisor Ontiveros. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we will look at item number seven, consideration and possible action to approve a funding agreement with Coconino Center for the Arts Theater for a total of $27,000 from community initiative funds, $25,000 from District One, $2,500 from District Two for new portable modular seating that will enhance public programming, concerts, performances, presentations, and facility rentals. Supervisor Horseman.
Yes, and, and this is in my district, and it's one of my very favorite places we have in Coconino County. The Center for the Arts is, as we know, a building that is a Flagstaff, or I should say Coconino County, a building that we lease to the Center for the Arts. They, of course, have a long and storied career providing culture and, and combining culture and science for all of our residents. They have been living on the existing, trying to, theater, I guess is the best way to call it, and those seats are horrible, so I really appreciate that they have started a campaign to put in new seating in their theater, and I am so pleased to be able to contribute a large portion, $25,000, to help them complete getting that seating done. Once they get the carpeting done, which the county, Coconino County Board of Supervisors has agreed to fund that, they will be able to put in new seating, which I think is just going to improve access and improve the enjoyment of the Coconino Center for the Arts and, and especially in the theater. So really pleased to see this. I think Julie McCormick is there, Vice Chair, if you see her, she may want to...
She is there, and she's coming to the podium.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Julie, would you like to address the board, please?
Thank you, Julie Koenig, Executive Director of Creative Flagstaff and Coconino Center for the Arts. Supervisor Horseman, I think you just stole my notes, I could, I think I can say them as eloquently as you, but I'll try and add on a couple of things. On behalf of the organization, we're honored about the collaboration between District One and District Two. I've had the opportunity to share with you all recently the many ways we're expanding the program, our programming across arts, science, and culture, as well as broadening our reach countywide. At the same time, our hub is at Coconino Center for the Arts. You all spend a lot of time there, and you know that these are 40-year-old seats, and we're just trying to do the most we can to improve our programming so that we can do our job and deliver the, the programming that we do best. And on that note, I do want to invite you all, this Saturday, we have the opening reception for what we say we're launching the Route 66 Centennial with an exhibition that includes the late Edward Keating, a contemporary photographer out of Portland, Oregon, West Pope, and also Shades of Route 66, Diversity Along Arizona's Route 66, as a combined exhibition that opens Saturday, and hopefully will be your last opportunity to sneak in and see the seats in their current condition, but yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the variety of programming that we do serve through that space and the things we can do there.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Fowler.
You all doing amazing job with this, the center, and really doing a lot more community outreach, so I'm really happy with that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Supervisor Brigade.
Just that, thank you for, thank you for the presentation, and then also just want to say that, again, you know, there's a lot of things that are happening within our county, and the Board is here supporting along the way, you know, so I just want to thank you and your staff for all you do and others that help too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, well, in that case, I'd just like to say, you know, thank you for the work, and look forward to, to the seating and, and look forward to checking out the Route 66 Expositions, because that's a really important time in, in our history, and it's cool to celebrate all the different things that have happened in our community. So thank you, and with that, do I have a motion? We have a mo, Supervisor Horseman.
I'd be happy to make that motion, and Julie, if I never see those seats again, I'll be happy. So I would like to make a motion to approve the funding agreement, the Coconino Center for the Arts, for a total of $27,500 from Board community initiative funds as specifically set forth in the agenda for new portable modular seating that will enhance public programming, concert performances, presentations, and facility rentals.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I have a second by Supervisor Fowler. We have a motion by Chair Horseman, second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, well, thank you. All right, next up is item number eight, consideration and possible action to prove, approve a funding agreement with Northland Family Health Center Fiat to provide a total of $10,000 from community initia, initiative funds, 2,500 from District One, 6,500 from District Two, and 1,000 from District Three, to cover the expense for law enforcement, prosecutors, and service providers working in the Cocon, in Coconino County to attend the Dallas Crimes Against Children's Conference. I believe Chair Horseman, you pulled this one? Would you like to start us off?
And, you know, I would like to turn this over to you, Vice Chair. I know this is something near and dear to your heart, and, and you asked me to contribute for, towards this, and it was certainly my honor to be able to do so, but I'd like to turn this over to you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, so this, this program, we want to, we want to support our law enforcement efforts to protect children, and so this is a way of getting these staff to go to this conference where they wouldn't otherwise be able to go to this conference, to get specialized training, to see indicators and ways to help support the team so that we can prevent these kind of crimes in our community. And with that, Michelle Rucker from the Family, Northland Family Health Center was supposed to be here, but she wasn't able to attend and sent a statement, and so I'd like to read her statement at this time. "On behalf of Northland, Northland Family Health Center and the North Star Task Force, I would like to express our deep appreciation for your past support and to respectfully urge your approval of continued funding for a second year. The funding provided by the Board of Supervisors last year allowed us to make, take meaningful strides in our shared mission to combat human trafficking and exploitation in Coconino County. With these resources, the North Star Task Force comprised of a local, of local service providers, law enforcement, tri, tribal partners, and community advocates, has built critical infrastructure, fostered cross-sector collaboration, and begun implementing targeted prevention and intervention strategies that were not possible before. This second year of funding is not simply a continuation, it is an investment in progress. We are moving from foundational work and strategic implementation with sustained support. We can expand trauma-informed outreach to vulnerable populations, especially youth, strengthen culturally responsive services across our rural and tribal communities, equip professionals with the training and tools necessary to identify and respond to trafficking, and build long-term survival-led systems of support. Ending trafficking is a long-term effort, but the work we are doing now is critical in, to shifting outcomes in our region. Your support is making that difference, and with your continued investment, we can ensure this work is not interrupted or lost. We thank you for your leadership and your commitment to the safety and well-being of every person in Coconino County." All right, with that, now with that statement read, are there any comments from board members? Supervisor Ontiveros.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez. I would just like to add that oftentimes you can, you can tell the success by the fruits that have been yielded, and I have seen some of the fruits of this organization, and I am very happy to be a part of contributing to continued training, and am happy to make a motion at such time that you would accept one.
Okay, are there any other comments from supervisors at this time? Supervisor Fowler.
This is such an important program, and again, I thought I have contributed to it, and, and I cannot from the diocese because the rule changes, but I really do support this program. I think it's very much needed. I want to just thank all those that are involved in this project and just really continue to support and maybe in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, in that case, we have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Ontiveros. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Supervisor Brigade. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously, and I'd just like to say thank you, everyone that's involved, and it's good to continue funding important work like that, and, you know, we've seen a couple high-profile cases in the community that I didn't realize were connected to this investment, that later on were pointed out that those high-profile cases were enabled because of the investment that we as a county made into these programs, and so it's an honor to continue to do so. We need to keep our community safe from human trafficking. Thank you. All right, next item, number nine, consideration and possible action to approve, to approve a funding agreement with Nuestros Raíces to provide a total of 2,800 in community initiative funds, 1,400 from District One, 1,400 from District Two, to pay for the cost of performers for the 2025 summer time tardeada. Chair Horseman, would you like to, to start, or would you like me to?
You know, once again, you, you know, you said, hey, this is a great program, and I agree, and I was so happy to join you with CI funds to be able to do this, so Vice Chair, I'd like to turn this to you.
All right, thank you. Well, Nuestros Raíces is a local, local organization that maintains the, the Latino-Hispanic tradition of Flagstaff and that history, and this tardeada is part of one of their fundraisers to help for the Dia de los Muertos event. I would like to invite Rebecca Ceballos, D.L.A., to, from Nuestros Raíces, to come up and, and kind of talk a little more about it, but it is, it is definitely an honor and a pleasure to help support their efforts in maintaining and celebrating our Latino-Hispanic history in Flagstaff and the greater Coconino County area. With that, I'll pass it over to Rebecca.
Thank you. Want to start it? Good afternoon, and thank you very much for letting us come up forward and speak. Nuestros Raíces, for those of you who don't know what it means, means our roots. It's as simple as that, and we're happy to try to maintain the history, the culture, our traditions here in Flagstaff for the Hispanic community. We like to hold our tardeada, our festival, basically is what it is. It's an afternoon festival, that's what tardeada means. We like to hold it at Our Lady of Guadalupe Church or chapel, because when, in the community that we grew up, the Hispanic community was basically on the south side of Flagstaff. There was a lot of small communities all over, and they were called different things. We had the Plaza Vieja, you're all familiar with that, Old Town, which is on West Clay Street over, so that's part of one of the communities. There was Plaza Nueva, Plaza, you know, there was just a lot of small communities that were all homes to the Hispanic community. The Hispanic community had one thing in common, and the Our Lady of Guadalupe Church, when it was built back in 1926, became the hub of the community. So we like to continue our festival there because we want the community to continue to celebrate and feel that celebration there. So we enjoy having our tardeada once a year. We've had it for 10 years at the Our Lady of Guadalupe Church, but before that, we've been... been, Our Lady, uh, we were an organization before Nuestros Raíces, we were called the Flagstaff Hispanic Pioneers. We've been around since like 1985, 86, just trying to get the community back together. What we realized was that we were not reaching everyone. We were only reaching the elderly people who we've seemed to forget and we wanted to bring them out to these, uh, to these festivals. So, we realized that we needed to invite everyone and we wanted to teach, show everyone and explain what our traditions, our culture, and what these events mean and why we do them. Our organization is tied up with, has partnership with several, I don't know if you've been to the Celebration of the Day of the Dead up at the museum in Northern Arizona? We are partners with them and that's, and we've been doing that with them for over 20 years, but prior to the museum, we did that three years before without, without them. So, uh, the festival, we would like to bring talented professional entertainment to our festival that we can't get here in Flagstaff locally. We have some local groups that we, we love to invite and participate, but we like to bring out, bring further entertainment in. So, in this case, we're asking for funding to bring a mariachi group from Phoenix. Uh, last year they were 10 members, this year they're eight. They're, it's an all-female mariachi group. Uh, they're international, uh, international performers and they come from all different backgrounds. They're police officers, attorneys, you name it, they're, but they're a beautiful, they sound beautiful, you'll, if you all can come, it's on August 9th, Saturday, at the Our Lady of Guadalupe Church in the parking lot. We decorated and everything, so, and we will sell food and, but we are looking for funding to provide that talented musicians to our organization, to our festival. So, we're also looking for private funds beyond this, but, um, there, and it's like we know, like everyone knows, talent is getting very expensive, you know, so we're looking for that.
And I just wanted to ask a question, if you could elaborate a little bit on the upcoming 100-year anniversary of not just Route 66, but Our Lady of Guadalupe Church and how Route 66 used to run in front of that church?
Right. Well, the, Our Lady of Guadalupe was built in 1926. It opened in 27, by 1926, we had, um, the community, unfortunately, was built for the wrong reason. The church was built for the wrong reasons. It was built because the Hispanic or the non-English speaking community was not able to worship at the Catholic church on the north side of the tracks. So, nictivity. So, they, um, the local priest and, and, but, one of the babbits, I can't remember which babbit, donated land and the community, the Hispanic community built the church. They would take money from the workers at the sawmill, uh, a dollar a paycheck from this, from all the Hispanic community, Hispanic workers, and that's how they provided funding for the church. So, that church was built not only for the Hispanic, for the non-speaking, non-English speaking community, but by them as well. So, this 1926, next year, we'll be celebrating 100 years at the church. Again, we will have a festival, um, sometime during next year in, in May or somewhere and then we're going to try to get a festival there. It'll be for 100 years of, uh, commitment by our community and if you have an opportunity to go into the, the church to view it, it's a, it's a great place and you'll feel right at home. Everyone will feel at home there. So, please, please come and look, please come to our festival, it's a great festival.
And one of the things to note is that with mariachis coming, they're able to do on Sunday, a morning mass with the mariachis, and I had the opportunity to participate in that mass a couple of years ago, and when you sit in that church and you look at all the stained glass windows and you hear the mariachi music and you could just think about in the 40s and 50s when Flagstaff was a sundown town and people weren't feeling welcome north of the tracks, how that was their refuge and that was such a special, peaceful, safe place. And so, uh, if you ever get a chance to go participate in a service there or just go, like, like we said, uh, go upstairs into the church, I definitely recommend it and you'll see that serenity of that space and why it's so important to the Latino Hispanic community of this area.
Right now, we're willing to get rid of historic buildings. Listening, I was reading the newspaper about the current, the old police department talking about knocking it down. I used to work there as a dispatcher a long ago, but it's, uh, interesting to see how quickly we're easily convinced to get rid of older buildings and it's great to see that our church has been able to sustain this. So, but, thank you very much, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any comments from board members? Supervisor Ontiveros.
Yes, just a comment. Vice Chair Vazquez, thank you for asking her to talk about the history of the church. I did not know that until right now, so thank you for sharing that with us. Um, very rich history and, um, I'm going to, that, the festival you're talking about is next year in May though, if I understood that correctly. Okay, um, Vice Chair Vazquez, I'm going to have you remind me of that as we get closer, that's a year away, that sounds really wonderful, so thank you for what you're doing in this community.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, thank you for holding that event, uh, the event and it's really a lot of fun. Food is great and company's great, it's just a wonderful place to be. The, the mariachi band, oh gosh, I listened to that last year and they were just amazing, so thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Supervisor Horseman.
Yes, and, uh, you know, once again, it's, it's my pleasure to be able to join you, Supervisor, uh, Vazquez and others on supporting this. It sounds like a fabulous, uh, time and a fabulous event and I look forward to attending. So, again, thank you for all you do, appreciate the, um, history of Our Lady of Guadalupe and, and, uh, look forward to the event, so thank you very much and thank you for what you do in our community.
Thank you. Supervisor Bagay.
Thank you. Vice Chair or Chair? I just, I just want to say that I had an opportunity to go to the event, um, it was really welcoming, people were just, you know, sitting together, talking and, you know, watching the dances and it was really nice, it sprinkled a little bit. It looks, it was so nice and I just want to say thank you for your hard work, you know, getting the, the, um, uh, the event going and, you know, making sure that, you know, and I always say, you know, we're very diverse as a county and I think that's very important because we, we learn from each other's, our cultures, our traditions, whatever it may be, um, just like Supervisor Ontiveros says, oh, I didn't know, you know. But anyway, I just want to say thank you so much for everything you guys are doing.
Yes, thank you, I just want to, you know, say thank you to Nuestros Raíces for all the work you're doing in the community and, you know, just wanted to share with the community, like one of the things that I learned through this process was the fact that Route 66 used to run in front of Our Lady of Guadalupe. So, Route 66 used to go to San Francisco, then go south to Phoenix, then Phoenix, all the way down to Mike's Pike, you turn a left and that would go all the way to Milton. So, for eight years, from 1926 to 1934, that was Route 66 and it was when they built the train overpass in 1934 that Milton, or I mean, Route 66 was rerouted into, into Milton and so, you know, that's a piece of Route 66 history when we're meeting that 100-year threshold or milestone that, that we don't want to forget, you know, because that connects Route 66 with Our, Our Lady of Guadalupe and, and so, you know, we will be announcing it more as events come. This tariada will be, there'll be some stuff related to that event, so there will be some support there and as we get closer to the event, I know there'll be the, the main event in May of 2026, we don't know the date yet, but then also for the Dia, uh, the de la Virgen on December 12th, they would also have some kind of event there to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the church there and so, you know, I just really appreciate the work that the, the families are doing to maintain this history because it's so important that we don't forget who we are, where we come from, and all our contributions because all of our old-time ancestors of Flagstaff contributed something here and it's important that it reflects that and some of us newcomers, you know, we don't always know that history and we don't learn it until we dive deep into it and so, you know, this is a good project and, and I really, uh, I'm really happy to be able to support it in this way. So, with that, can I get a motion to, uh, approve the CI request?
So, move.
Does she need to read it out? Yeah, okay, so could you please read the motion for number nine? I guess you guys are really putting my voice to work, huh? So, can I get a motion to consider the, uh, the possible action to approve a funding agreement with Nuestros Raíces to provide a total of $2,800 from community initiative funds, 1,400 from District One, 1,400 from District Two, to pay for the cost of performers for the 2025 Summertime Tariada?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fowler, a second by Supervisor Ontiveros. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, appreciate it. Next item, number 12, consideration and possible action to approve the extension of the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Flagstaff and the Coconino County Free Library District for the allocation of funding for the City-County Free Library District effective July 2025, July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. Uh, with that, I'll hand it over to our county manager or Ms. Siri Malaney. Oh, Ms. Lena, you first, I'm sorry.
I can't hear Lena.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought I turned it on. Okay, I just, I pulled this item to just appreciate the agreement between the City of Flagstaff and Coconino County for a continued partnership in this area and, um, it looks like Siri, yeah, if you can provide more information about this agreement.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler, Chair and members of the board. So, this is an extension of the existing agreement, um, as Supervisor Fowler mentioned, it's a longstanding agreement with the City of Flagstaff acting as the library district administrators of district funds, but an exciting update is that there has been work with a consultant to look at the funding structure under the IGA and, um, make a recommendation for some updates to that IGA. So, for now, we're requesting in conjunction with the City of Flagstaff and all the partner libraries to continue the existing IGA while we work on some modifications, um, so it's likely you will see this again as an updated item with a revised IGA in the next 12 months as that get, that work gets finalized, um, again collaboratively with all of the libraries in the district.
I just want to add that this is a really important, um, agreement because with this agreement, we're able to provide library service throughout Coconino County, uh, and we have affiliates that we work with, where there's this, um, municipalities and cities and towns and, um, and we have our, um, mobile library as well, so, and this is a service that is, um, sometimes almost impossible to provide and yet we're able to do that with a partnership of, with Flagstaff and really appreciate this for, um, really wonderful program and they're not just a library, these libraries do, hold so many of educational events, they do job, um, um, they provide free, um, free, uh, computer laptops so people can do research, uh, uh, the, also the, um, being able to search for a job, apply for a job, there are, there's so many services that those, these small libraries are able to provide and I just want to appreciate all of them, I want to appreciate City of Flagstaff, um, for continuing this partnership with us and our library, our law library is included in this and that, that just, um, could say a lot more about it, but just appreciate this, uh, agreement that we have. Thank you. With that, um, Chair, I'd like to move that we approve this, uh, item 12 where we, consideration and possible action to approve extension of intergovernmental agreement between the City of Flagstaff and Coconino County Free Library District for the allocation and funding for the City-County Free Library District effective January, or July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027.
Then we have a motion by Supervisor Fowler, a motion, a second by Supervisor Bagay.
I, I, uh, before I second the motion, I just want to say that I do sit on the library board and there's so many activities that are happening and I'm really supportive of this agreement and so therefore, uh, I'll just go ahead and second it.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Fowler, a second by Supervisor Bagay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, since we got through the motion, are there any other comments before we move on from this item? Okay, well, in that case, appreciate the IGA and look forward to continuing seeing the services provided to our rural areas. Uh, next item is ni- item number 13 and I believe this is Supervisor Horseman, so I'll pass it over to you.
Yes, thank you, and this is, uh, possible action to approve Coconino County Workforce Development Board's recommendation to appoint, uh, Shannon Schutz and Sandra Hinsky for a term from June 3rd, 2025 through June 3rd, 2027. Board members, you remember we tabled this from the last board meeting, we were in the process of, uh, getting our agreement together with, uh, the Workforce Development Before Board, our IGA, and I know we'll continue to work on our, uh, relationship as board, uh, Board of Supervisors to the Board of Workforce Development, but in the meantime, we have two wonderful individuals who have stepped up and have agreed to be part of our Workforce Development Board, uh, and I believe they may be there or available online, so it might be appropriate, um, Mr. Vice Chair, to hear from them and then I'd be happy to make a motion on this.
All right, yes, I see we have Sandra Hinsky on the, virtually, so if you'd like to please, uh, have the floor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, everybody. Members of the board, the guests I can't see, it's wonderful to be here. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there in person, so I apologize for that, so, I'm really happy to be here. Like I was introduced, my name is Sandra Hinsky, I'm the Executive Vice President and Provost at Coconino Community College. I am almost one year in, one year and six more days, so I'm really happy to be here and look forward to all the work, uh, we're going to do here for our county.
Great.
Great, thank you. Are there any other comments from board members or county manager?
Thank you, Vice Chair Vazquez, and also to note Shannon Schutz is here and she's also on the, she is in the room.
Please, come down, say some comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Supervisors. Um, my name's Shannon Schutz, can you hear me? Okay, I'll get closer. Uh, my name's Shannon Schutz, I moved to, uh, Flagstaff 30 years ago to go to college, like many people that live in our community, and I chose to stay here and raise my family and I've served, um, our community and our counties, um, in different capacities, I've been the Parks and Rec Commissioner for District Four, I was a six-year term there and, um, really looking forward to serving our county again, learning more about the Workforce Development Board, working with the other colleagues on that board and how we can support Philly and the staff, um, to really make a difference in our communities as diverse as they are and why each community, um, needs, so, thank you.
Thank you and we appreciate both of you for stepping up and, uh, joining this work, the WIA Workforce Board and so are there any, uh, comments from other board members at this time? Supervisor Ontiveros.
Um, I would also like to join Vice Chair Vazquez in his appreciation, um, for Sandra and Shannon, thank you for your, uh, work that you do for the community.
Thank you. Any other comments, board members?
Yeah, just, just appreciate your volunteering for these, um, very, very important boards, we really depend on them and with, and their advice to the board, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bagay.
Just thank you. I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that WIIO does and, uh, your involvement now and the next, for the rest of the time that we approved it, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor, Chair Horseman?
Yes, and, um, just what everybody has said, you know, we really do depend on, uh, our community members to step up and join us and take on these voluntary roles that really help the board in our decision-making, but really help the residents of our community, which really what this is all about and so we really appreciate, um, both of you agreeing to step up to be members of this board, it's a very important board for us and we look forward to working closely. We're at the Workforce Development Board as supervisors, so thank you again, uh, both Sandra and Shannon and look forward to working with you as we move forward on this, so thank you.
Thank you and with that, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Consider possible action to approve Coconino- Consider possible action to approve Coconino County Workforce Development Board's recommendation to appoint Shannon Schutz and Sandra Hinsky for a term from June 3, 2025 to June 3, 2027.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Begay and a second by Chair Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being here and congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next up is item number 22, consideration and possible action to approve and accept the Burton Family Foundation Grant Award in the amount of $5,000 for the Senior Services Nutrition Program in Williams and a corresponding budget adjustment in the amount of $5,000 for fiscal year 2026. Health and Human Services, so I'm not sure who pulled it, so I'll pass it on to our county manager.
And actually, I pulled it, and I just wanted, and I just wanted, the reason I pulled it was I just wanted to thank the Burton Family Foundation for their very generous award for the Senior Services Nutrition Program in Williams. It's so important to see community members and foundations stepping up to join us in these really important services and programs that we provide. So I just wanted to pull it to thank the Burton Family Foundation for their grant award.
Thank you. And I see we have Health and Human Services Director Michelle Axelin at the podium. So would you care to share with us a little more?
Thank you Chair for pulling this and Vice Chair. We are extremely grateful to the Burton Family Foundation for recognizing the growth in our Williams area at our senior center. That area has seen tremendous growth, and it wouldn't be Health and Human Services without leaving you a quick little stat on that area. Over 35% of the population in Ash Fork is over the age of 65-plus, which is our largest growing area in the Williams area attending our senior center. So thank you to that foundation for making our meals possible. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other comments by board members at this time? Supervisor Ontiveros?
I also would just like to publicly express my appreciation to the Burton family for their contribution in this matter.
Thank you. Any other supervisors, comments? Okay, well, I'd just like to say again, thank you for this contribution, but just how important it is that those of us that can and have a little extra help out those that can't. Because right now, we're in a tough time with the economy and stuff, and people are hurting, and all these gestures make a huge difference in people's lives. And so thank you for that contribution, and thank you for our staff for getting those contributions out, direct services to the population that it's meant to, because that's so important. And like we say, you know, public service is what we do. And so thank you. With that, do I have a motion to approve the and accept the Burton Family Foundation Grant Award in the amount of $5,000 for the Senior Services Nutrition Program in Williams and corresponding budget adjustment in the amount of $5,000 for fiscal year 2026?
I would like to make a motion to approve that, please.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second.
We have a second by Chair Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so we're down to our last consent agenda item that got pulled, I believe. Item number 24, consideration and possible action to approve and accept contract number 2024-12347-NTR between Coconino Health and Human Services and Northern Arizona Council of Governments Area Agency on Aging, NACOG AAA, in the amount of $182,196 for the period July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026 for senior meal services with a cost share amount of $18,264 from the Senior Services General Fund and approve the corresponding fiscal year 2026 budget adjustment of $163,932. I'm not, I don't remember who pulled this one.
Me.
Supervisor Horseman?
Yes, and the reason once again that I did is just to call for the community's attention, the importance for us to continue to work with our local agencies and, in this case, NACOG, in order to continue to provide some of our most vulnerable and important part of our residents, our seniors, and to provide assistance for senior meal services. I think many of us have had the good fortune and pleasure to be able to go and to be part of some of these senior meal programs and to work and be there with our seniors and see how it's such a needed part of our community, as you've also noted, Vice Chair. So I wanted just to call this, this is an important agreement, contract between Coconino County HHS and NACOG. So that's why I pulled it, and it looks like Michelle is there, and she can give some more complete information.
Yes, please.
Thank you Chair and Vice Chair. We are extremely grateful to NACOG for this funding. It is a little more funding than we have received previously, and we really do appreciate that with the amount of seniors. When you think of, you know, just $163,000, what it can do for our community, I mean, that is feeding 80 unduplicated individuals every month out of Williams, 116 out of our Flagstaff. We're running four Meals on Wheels routes, which feeds another additional 80 in our Flagstaff community and another 23 in our Williams area. So the silver wave, as we commonly refer to it, is increasing in our community. Our population is almost 14% over the age of 65. That is a huge growth. One in six adults are over the age of 65 nationally. So we're really appreciative of this funding to feed our seniors.
Yes, thank you. So important for our most vulnerable, our seniors. And so with that, do I have a motion to approve item number 24?
I would like to make a motion.
Thank you. Do we have to read it for the record, or was that enough? Or did, okay. So in that case, we have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros. Do I have a second? A second by Chair Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros. We have a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We are now, the Flood Control District, may I have a motion to approve Flood Control District consented item number 46?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Begay, a second by Chair Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros. Do I have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, now, we are, may I have a motion to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros, a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, are there any items that board members want to consider separately?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Chair Horseman?
I would like to remove item number 48 from the consent agenda for further discussion.
Okay, are there any other items to be pulled for discussion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the, for the Public Health District, number 47 item without the number 48, which was pulled.
Okay, so we have a motion for the consent agenda, items 47 through 55 minus item 48. Do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now on item 48, consideration and possible action to approve and accept Grant Award Number 31037282 in the amount of $39,550 from the Arizona Community Foundation awarded to Coconino County Health and Human Services Clinic to be used for the purpose of increasing the availability of vaccinations to children in the community during the fiscal year 2026 fiscal period. Do I, I will pass it over to Chair Horseman.
Yes, and thank you. And the reason I pulled this is twofold. Number one is to thank the Arizona Community Foundation. We have come and knew the board has seen where they once again have stepped up and provided additional funding to Coconino County to help us with some of the community services that we provide for our residents. And so I want to thank the Arizona Community Foundation once again for partnering with us to help us provide for needed services. And number two, just to give an opportunity for HHS to talk about, a little bit about the availability of vaccines for children in the community. I know there's been so much information that we see and hear on the radio, on TV, et cetera. And, you know, we here in Coconino County do and have vaccines available for our children and encourage families to become familiar with these vaccines and their availability here in Coconino County through HHS. And it looks like Michelle is here, and she can tell a lot, a lot better information than I can. So Vice Chair, it's probably appropriate we hear from her, not me.
Yes, please, the podium is yours.
Thank you Chair and Vice Chair. Chair is correct. We are so grateful for this funding. Our funding was cut. We are receiving a 10% to 15% in our Vaccine for Children's Program due to the federal budget that's being passed currently. This funding will allow our staff to be able to go out and run those health fairs that we do right before we go back to school. Those happen in Page, Verdonia, Blue Ridge. We'll be launching our Flagstaff One on July 26 with 20 other vendors and trying to get families the supports they need. This program is really vital for the parents that choose to vaccinate their children. We will be able to provide low, no-cost vaccines for them. So we're very grateful for this funding. Otherwise, these things would not be happening this next year.
That's right.
Thank you, that's so important, you know, because those are services to our rural areas and our most vulnerable. So this is, just want to say thank you to the Arizona Community Foundation for stepping up because, you know, it was unexpected and it was a great surprise. And so, you know, earlier I had mentioned about those that can, should, well, this is one of those examples of people that could, that did. And so thank you, Arizona Community Foundation. Are there any other comments from board members at this time?
Yes, I just.
Supervisor Fowler?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to thank Michelle for your, the vast partnerships that you have. And when there is a federal government who decides this is not important, not knowing how the local impact is, you're able to form, bring another partner in to be able to say, to provide those services. So it's so vital, especially when there's measles break that is out there, and it's continuing, which is pretty scary. So anyway, I just want to appreciate you and your team and Community Foundation for having this strong partnership. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, and thank you for your advocacy. Without your advocacy, a lot of this would not be happening. So thank you.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the item?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Chair Horseman, a second by Supervisor Ontiveros. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And again, thanks again, Michelle, and all your hard work and your team's hard work to make this happen. Now may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros. Do we have a second? Second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Motion passes. Okay, now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors?
I move that we resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fowler. Do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Jail District Consent Agenda item, are there any jail district items that board members want to consider separately? Okay, in that case, do I have a motion to pass the Jail District Consent Agenda?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros. Do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors? We have a motion by Supervisor Fowler. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Fowler and a second by Supervisor Begay. It's been a long day, and we're still not even halfway there yet. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, may I have a motion to approve, oh, let's see. Yeah, next item, did we resolve as the Board of Supervisors? Okay. Next item, number 58, discussion and possible action to approve Resolution 2025-32 that approves an intergovernmental agreement between Coconino County and the Hopi Tribe for maintenance of 23.33 miles of certain gravel roads located on Hopi tribal lands within Coconino County. Public Works Director Christopher Tressler. Okay, well, yeah, so in that case, I'll hand it over to our county manager.
Thank you. Christopher was just here, and this is an agreement with the Hopi Tribe for maintenance of 23.33 miles of certain gravel roads located on Hopi tribal lands within Coconino County. Wanted to note that many of the historical roads that we, the county, maintain on tribal lands, on the Navajo Nation, some of those roads do venture into Hopi lands as well. And so we wanted to formalize some agreements with the Hopi Tribe as well, just to make sure that we were in alignment, that we had agreements in alignment with the work that we were doing. And thank goodness Christopher is here to speak more about this IGA.
All right.
Thank you. Sorry, stepped out.
Perfect timing.
Hello, Vice Chair Vasquez and members of the board. So this item relates to road maintenance work that the county's actually been conducting for many, many years. And it's come to our attention that the road maintenance work that we're doing under a separate IGA for the Bureau of United Affairs should actually be within Hopi IGA as these roads traverse Hopi tribal lands. And so this is not, this is not new road work, and it's not specific to just Hopi people, but actually, these roads are open to the public, and all residents and travelers within these areas use these roads. And so we've worked with the Hopi Tribal Transportation Committee to develop this IGA, and we're looking forward to getting it approved and in place so that we can formalize our agreement with the Hopi Tribe and with our road maintenance activities.
Great, thank you. Are there any comments by board members? Supervisor Begay?
I have a question for Chris. So the highlights of the changes that were made, do you have any in here that, from, we didn't have an IGA with Hopi, right?
This, thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez and Supervisor Begay. This is the first IGA related to road maintenance that I'm aware of. And so this is a new IGA, not a revised IGA.
So, so what areas did you, I know you guys went back and forth after, even as of last week?
Sure, so on this IGA, there's just a little more than 20 miles of road. And the roads include 6720, 6730, portions of 6720, and portions of 6730, and also Buffalo Ranch Road and an area around Pollock Ranch Road as well. And the, and the board item with the IGA that you have, and the last page of the document. And that, and the board item with the IGA that you have, in the last page of the document, there's a map that shows the location of these roads.
Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. I just want to appreciate your, your, let's see, commitment, your, just your patience in figuring this out because it was, we were at a point where we're not going to be able to provide maintenance anymore. We were at a point where it's like, okay, what do we do? Just not have that agreement there? Because we had, you know, we were, because the Hopi Tribe was not really wanting us to go through there. But in the end though, you know, you really made an effort to just really make sure you're talking to the right people. Transportation Director was brought in. That really helped and I'm so happy he's there and we're able to work with the committee a lot, a lot more and more, creating a better understanding the role between county effort, county role and tribes and on tribal lands. That sometimes is that sovereignty gets in the way and that is really what we had to go through. It creates a, a more challenging situation. And you maneuvered it and you were able to work through that. So I just really appreciate you and your team for being able to do that. So thank you. Because this is such an important roads that we're talking about. These are roads that are coming, communities, people coming from Navajo communities through Hopi to Navajo and being able to get to work. So it's just really important corridor, basically, in that little region. And it's really happy that you were able to really settle on this agreement. It's so important. So thank you. Just want to appreciate you and Supervisor Begay and being able to work this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by Board members? No? Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate the work and glad we got it done because there were some folks in some communities that were isolated, that weren't getting the maintenance that we would like to provide for them. So this is great to know that we got this done. So great job. Thank you. With that, can, I may have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-32 That Approves an Intergovernmental Agreement Between Coconino County and the Hopi Tribe For Maintenance of 23.33 Miles of Certain Gravel Roads Located on Hopi Tribal Lands Within Coconino County. We have a motion by Supervisor Begay. Do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Say nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next up, item number 59, Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt a Coconino County Reserve Policy. We'll have Financer, Finance Director Siri Malanid to speak on the item. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair, Chair, and members of the Board. We have two items on the agenda for discussion and action that are related to the upcoming budget adoption that we will do later this evening, but are not part of the statutory process. So the first one is the adoption of a reserve policy. For Coconino County, the current state is that we have a larger set of financial policies. Some of them are board-approved, some have, have not been board-approved over the years. So this is one effort to break those out. We've been working on that effort over time to get them all board-approved. And this is an important one. We had an unofficial, not board-adopted reserve policy that we had been working off of in the past, but really in practice, we had been going with the information that is in this document. What this does is it helps explain to the public any fund balances that the county has on our balance sheet and helps provide a little more information as to why the county has reserves. The update to this is to establish a 25% of general fund revenue as our reserve policy, which is about equivalent to $25 million a year that we have in an emergency reserve. One thing I just wanted to explain as I read the purpose of the, under the policy of having this policy, and the county will establish and work to maintain reserve balances to guard its citizens against service disruptions in the event of economic uncertainties, local disasters, and other financial hardships, provide for fluctuations in revenues and expenditures while ensuring adequate cash flow, enable the county to mitigate risks, and provide contingency plans to maintain community resilience, and demonstrate continued creditworthiness to bond rating agencies and comply with relevant debt covenants. And so, the purpose of this policy is very important and so we are asking the board today to formalize the reserve policy as established in this document. I'm happy to take any questions on this policy.
Are there any questions at this time by Board members? Supervisor Ontiveros.
Thank you Vice Chair Vasquez. I don't have any questions because through the presentations that we had at the budget hearings in May, I fully understand this. And I just want to publicly state that I am very supportive of this. It could be likened to a rainy day fund and that's how I personally budget. And I just want to say that I'm very supportive of us, the county, putting this money into this fund. I think that it really shows good fiscal, financial management.
Thank you. Super, Chair Horstman.
Yes, and I agree with Supervisor Ontiveros. You know, this is really an example of, once again, Coconino County and the Board of Supervisor doing what we can to make sure we maintain fiscal responsibility and we maintain the services that our communities expect from us and are needed by them. And in these extremely uncertain times, and with the fluctuations that we have seen, both in federal funding but also in state funding, I think it's extremely important that we do, do, that we do a reserve policy as set forth by Siri. Not only does it guard against the fluctuations, but it guards against service disruptions. And obviously, we will be there if necessary to provide these essential services. So I think it's extremely important. I applaud Siri and our county management staff for encouraging the board, as well as my colleagues, for being willing to take a look at this and to put some money aside for that rainy day or that opportunity, if, if it arises for emergencies or whatever, for us to be able to provide for our community. So I'm very much in support of this. I think it is an example of responsible financial planning. And once again, the county has continuing to do that and my colleagues have continuing to be responsive. So responsive and responsible. How's that? So thank you so much and I definitely support this reserve policy.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments? Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, I, I don't want to repeat everything's been said, but it is very important that we think about our future. So much uncertainty from one announcement to the next and it's just really concerns that, that, that is in the news all the time and all the different actions that are being taken. And yet, we still have to provide those services. And we, if any kind of service is impact in our emergency, if there's any kind of emergency, we'd be able to use this. I just want to thank you as Finance Director and our county managers and Deputy County Managers and Department Heads and whoever that was involved. Just want to thank them for putting this together and being able to really look into the future where we are. We are really, we're being able to be sustainable into the future. So I think this provides that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Supervisor Begay.
Hi Siri, thank you for you and your team and also the board and administration here. I know that we really need to, we've always talked about this, you know, reserves. We need to make sure that we have enough money for the rainy day and that, you know, to cover expenses, you know, where it may be needed, like for staffing, if, if there's a need and there's all sorts of things that we can use that, I set aside dollars for, but we just have to do this from year to year, you know, just put a little bit aside, you know, and just keep going because we don't know what the funding is going to be like. And it's already, you know, Michelle just mentioned, you know, that part of her program went in a certain area and, you know, things like that. And those are critical, like the vaccinations. We need those vaccinations. But those are things that, you know, we may possibly use those for. So thank you so much for my, to my colleagues in their administration and then Siri and, you know, everyone that was involved and, you know, getting this to the board. Thank you.
Yes, I guess I'm the last one. So I'll go ahead and make my comments. I just, again, want to reiterate that this is good fiscal policy. It's important that we have a rainy day fund because we don't know what the future looks like and this allows us to maintain the level of service that we provide for our county residents. And so, it's really important that we continue to plan this way and put a little aside for a rainy day fund. So with that said, do I have a motion to, to adopt a county, Coconino County Reserve Policy?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros. Do we have a second? Second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now we're into item number 60, Consideration and Possible Action To Adopt a Stability Fund of $15 Million as a Fund Balance Commitment for Fiscal Year 2026 And Release All Prior Fund Balance Commitments. And with that, I'll pass it over to our Finance Director.
Thank you Vice Chair and Chair and members of the Board. Just to differentiate this item from the last one, so the last item was the policy adoption for our reserve. That would be in place regardless of, you know, any uncertainty or anything special happening in the world as part of, you know, the best practice for having a reserve or a rainy day policy. This item is an enhancement to that or a supplement as discussed during the budget meetings. We'll also present on this later this evening when we do budget adoption, a little more information for the public. But I thought just, you know, to help understand this, I'd, I'd go through the first two paragraphs of the background section in the staff report. And so, during our budget development discussions, there was discussion about county reserves and budget uncertainties. A lot of that was noted in your comments a minute ago. In order to address budget uncertainties specifically for fiscal year 2026, including those stemming from possible disruptions in federal and state funding or revenue disruptions from economic uncertainties, and setting aside funds for natural disaster mitigation, the board included a $15 million one-time fund balance set aside as part of the fiscal year 2026 budget. This is referred to as the County Stability Fund. These funds will be set aside using existing general fund cash that is on hand and will be in addition to the 25% reserve policy for the general fund. The committed fund balance is established specifically as a fund set aside for natural disaster response, cash flow coverage, and service continuation and planning in the event ongoing federal, state, or local funding is reduced. Any use of the stability funds during the fiscal year, other than for cash flow coverage, will be presented to the Board of Supervisors for specific allocation and approval as a budget amendment. So pausing there, again, just reiterating that this is an additional set aside. It is available to be used for that service continuation or covering cash flow, but any specific allocation of these resources during the year would come back to the Board of Supervisors, at which time we would uncommit those dollars as a set aside and, and ask the board to vote to use them for a specific purpose at that time if one is identified. So again, it's just additional resources at our disposal, given the uncertainty as noted in our revenue streams and, you know, federal support. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions about this as well.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments by, by Board members at this time? Supervisor Ontiveros.
Thank you Vice Chair Vasquez. Again, I have no questions because they were fully answered during the board, the budget presentation. But I just want to again say that this shows good fiscal management by this board, by putting this money away. It's like a second rainy day fund, in essence. And I think that that is good fiscal management that I am very supportive of.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, and once again, it just shows the uncertainty of our times right now. And, and again, I applaud the county management, Siri County Management, and my colleagues for taking a look at the uncertainties and the need for us to do what we can to be there for our community and make sure essential, we have the funds available for the essential services that our residents certainly rely on. So I am in support of this one-time $15 million stability fund for 2026.
Great, thank you. Are there any other comments by Board members? Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, again, this is a very important action that we are taking to just really making sure that our county is safeguarded against all the uncertainties that are coming down, that is surrounding our, this time. So just really appreciate us putting this aside. So thank you.
Yes, thank you for the presentation and bringing this to, this 15, 15 million to, as a, as a stability fund. And for the public, if you're curious about how we got here or the process of it, our budget meetings from May are all on YouTube, so you have the pleasure of watching all 30-some hours of it if you'd like to know how we got to this point. And so, with that, can I have a motion to adopt a stability fund of 15 million as a fund balance commitment for fiscal year 2026 and release all prior fund balance commitments?
So move.
Okay, there's a motion by Supervisor Fowler, a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously. And with that, we are at, about to start a new public hearing, but I would recommend that we take a bio-break until 6 o'clock because we were supposed to have a dinner break that we did not have and we're supposed to start at 6. So at least to give us as Board members a few minutes to stretch before we go into our, our public hearing. So we will adjourn until 6. Thank you.
We do have the applicant Nicholas Sassi on the phone virtually. I don't know about if you can promote him for me. Thank you. We received this liquor license application and this is for a Series 6 bar liquor license at The Well House, which is located at Highway 87, Mile Post 290 in Happy Jack. Like I said, the agent is Nicholas Sassi. He is present virtually if there's any questions. We did send this out to our various departments, Sheriff, Community Development, Risk Management, and Health. They reviewed the application. They do not have any concerns. It was posted at the location for 20 days. We did not receive any comments from the public with any concerns or questions regarding the application. This is a location where there's already been a liquor license for 40 or 50 years, so it's a change in ownership. So again, the Board of Supervisors make, makes a recommendation to the state regarding the application, whether to recommend approval or disapproval of the license, but ultimately, the State Department of Liquor make, issues the license for the applicant. So I'll leave it at that and we can do the public hearing for that one.
Is the applicant available online or in person?
Mr. Sassi, if you're on, if you want to go ahead and unmute and introduce yourself.
Lindsay, this is Patrice. Apparently, we are not taking a break. Is that correct? We're going forward?
Sorry, Chair Horstman. Correct. We're going through the liquor licenses.
Okay, it just might be good to let, make sure the public knows that. The last I heard was that we are taking a break, so it's good for the public to know we're, we're still back on and still working.
Thank you Chair Horstman. Sounds like maybe Nicholas is having some technical issues on the virtual side.
All right, well, we have a long night, so why don't we go ahead into the public comment? And then if he's able to get on afterwards, we'll let him have, have a moment. So the public hearing is open. We will now take comments. When you are called on to speak, please announce your name. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please make sure that your comments are directed to the topic. Clerk Daly will explain how those here in person can provide comment.
Thank you Vice Chair. At this time, if there's anyone. Thank you, Vice Chair. At this time, if there's anyone here in person that would like to provide comment regarding item number sixty-one's public hearing for the liquor license application, please make your way on up to the podium. And it looks like there is no one here to comment regarding this item.
Okay, in that case, the hearing is now closed. Are there any, are there any questions from board members? Supervisor Ontiveros?
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez. This is in my district. I am familiar with how this process works. I fully support making a recommendation to the Arizona State Liquor Board to approve this and am happy to make that motion now.
Okay, so. Okay, thank you. We do have comments. Supervisor Fowler?
Yes, Lindsay, it's actually a question. So that, when it was publicly posted, were there any oppositions?
Thank you Supervisor Fowler for that question. There were no comments or concerns or questions sent to our office. So on the physical posting at the location, we do provide our phone number directly to me as well as notice of this public hearing tonight at this location. And we have not received any concerns or comments regarding the application.
Okay, thank you. And we just make a recommendation, we do not approve?
Correct. You make a recommendation regarding the application based on the board's knowledge of the area and if you've received any constituent concerns regarding it. And that recommendation then is sent to the State Department of Liquor and they ultimately make the decision whether to issue the license or not.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members at this time? I just got to say before we vote that I got to drive by and I saw The Well House. I'm like, I know that name. I know that friend. And then I came for the board, board agenda review and it's like, oh, that's what we're doing. I knew I knew that place. So with that said, it looks like we do have the recommendation. We have a motion to recommend approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding the application for a Series zero zero six bar liquor license at The Well House located at Highway eighty-seven mile post two ninety, Happy Jack, eight six zero, eight six zero two four. And Agent Nicholas Roy Sassi?
Yes, and I would make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros and a second by Supervisor Chair Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is public hearing and consideration, possible recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control regarding an application number thirty-four sixty-eight forty-seven for a Series zero ten beer and wine store liquor license at Grand Canyon Country Store located at Highway sixty-seven mile post six oh five, Fredonia, Arizona, eight six zero two-two. Agent Lawrence Franklin Eines. And I'll pass it over to Clerk Daly.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Again, we received this liquor license and this is again for the Series ten beer and wine store at the Grand Canyon Country Store, which is in Fredonia. The applicant Lawrence could not be here tonight, but he did, and in talking to him, he did note that this is same situation where there's been a liquor license at this location for about forty years and it's a change in ownership, therefore the transfer of the license. So the, the hearing notice was posted at the location for twenty days. We did not receive any comments or concerns regarding the application and we have been in touch with Mr. Ennis too, and he has not received any concerns as well. We sent it out to our department, sheriff, community development, risk manager and health. They reviewed the application and do not have any concerns regarding it. So again, the board makes a recommendation to the state regarding the application, to the state to then issue the license, whether that's for a recommendation for approval or disapproval. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Is the applicant present? Oh, you said he's not there, sorry. Okay, in that case, we'll open the public hearing. The public hearing is open. We will now take comments. When you're called on upon to speak, please announce your name. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please make sure that your comments are directed to the topic. Clerk Daly, please explain how those here in person can make comment.
Thank you. If there's anyone here for item number sixty-two's public hearing regarding this liquor license application and would like to provide comment, please come on up to the podium and we will receive your comment now. It looks like there is no one here that wants to comment regarding the license.
Okay, in that case, in the interest of time, the hearing is now closed. Are there any questions by board members? Supervisor Fowler?
I just want, this is in my district. I was just there two weeks ago. And so I, I would recommend that we recommend the, and approve the recommendations for the liquor license.
Alright, in that case, are there any other comments by board members? In that case, may I have a motion to recommend approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding the application for a Series zero one zero beer and wine stored liquor license at the Grand Canyon Country Store located at Highway sixty-seven mile post six oh five, Fredonia, Arizona, eight six zero two-two. Agent Lawrence Franklin Eines, Jr.
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fowler. Do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Alright, item number sixty-three, our last license of the, before the break. Public hearing and consideration and possible recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control regarding an application number thirty-four sixty-five fifty-seven for a Series zero zero seven beer and wine bar liquor license for the establishment, wine tasting and more located at seventeen seven thirty South Munn's Ranch Road, Munn's Park, Arizona, eight six zero one seven, Agent Lauren K. Merritt. With that, I'll hand it over to Clerk Daly.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez and Supervisors. Again, we received the application and this is for the wine tasting and more location, which if you're familiar with Aggie's Barbecue, it's that same facility. And we do have Lauren here. Oh, thank you, yes. And we do have one of the applicants here regarding the application if there's any questions. But again, the liquor license has existed at the location under Aggie's and the facility is being split so that then the Aggies will suspend their license to then allow wine tasting and more to have the license. I'm not sure if that's the right word. And we sent it out to our departments, obviously sheriff, health, community development and risk, and none of them have concerns. It has been posted at the location physically for twenty days and we have not received any comments or concerns from the public as well. And this is again something the board would make a recommendation to, to the State Liquor Department regarding the application.
Okay, is the applicant here? Would you like to present? Please come to the podium.
I apologize for you guys rushing, you know, for dinner. No, I decided to open up the saloon side of Aggie's Barbecue. Aggie's Barbecue is similar effect or focusing on the barbecue side. Wanted to bring something new and different to Munn's Park, which is a wine tasting room. So we have enclosed the wall that separates Aggie's and the saloon with a thirty-six inch door that enters so we can share the restroom. I have my own entrance. Aggie's customers can come in, but they cannot bring their alcohol or food and vice versa. So yeah, so I'm going to have shakurri fondue to start, something small, quiet, where people can have meetings. You know, a lot of us are a little bored up in Munn's Park during the winter time, so I'd like to have something special in the winter. You know, book clubs, paintings, sip. So I'm trying to bring something new to the community and everybody's been amazingly supportive. I brought one of my dear friends, Gail, who's a big part of the community as well. So if you have any questions, I'm ready to go. It's fully remodeled. Health inspection was done yesterday, so everything's ready to go. I'm just waiting for this.
Great, thank you. We have to have our public comment and then we'll have the board available for questions. So now, the public hearing is open. We will now take comments. When you are called on to speak, please announce your name. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please make sure that your comments are directed to the topic. Clerk Daly, please explain how those in person can provide comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair. At this time, if there's anyone here that would like to provide a comment regarding item number sixty-three, the public hearing for the liquor license, you can make your way on up to the podium now. Looks like we don't have anyone here that would like to provide comment.
Okay, in that case, the public hearing is now closed. Board members, are there any questions? Supervisor Ontiveros?
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez. No questions. This is in my district and it is supported by the community. I have not heard or received one complaint about this, so I am in full favor of making a recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for approval.
Thank you. Are there any other board member questions or comments? Okay, in that case, may I have a motion to recommend the approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding the application for a Series zero zero seven beer and wine bar liquor license for the establishment, wine tasting and more located at seventeen seven thirty South Munn's Ranch Road, Munn's Park, Arizona, eight six zero one seven, Agent Lauren K. Merritt.
Yes, and I'll make a motion for that for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros and a second by Chair Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. And now we will take a break. We need at least fifteen minutes. Can we come back at six, six twenty? Or can we do six thirty?
Yes, Vice Chair Vasquez, I would recommend six twenty. We have our applicants here for the Domestic Water Improvement District and then we'll get into the budget. Sorry for the short timeline, but we do have a public hearing posted for, for six. So the closest we can honor that would be, would be good.
Alright, in that case, we'll do a ten minute and we'll start at six fifteen.
Thank you. Good luck with your wine tasting. Sounds fun.
Sounds fun.
Supervisor Vasquez, can you hear me? Just want to make sure I'm back on since we've had some difficulties. I cannot hear you. Can somebody speak there to make sure I can hear you?
In response?
Patrice, we can hear you.
Yes. And I can now hear you. That's the good news.
Clerk Daly, are we ready to begin? All right, welcome back, everybody. Are we recording yet? Do I need to wait?
We are, we're recording.
Okay, well, in that case, welcome to our special session, which continues. Thank you for allowing us to take a quick break. We're a little bit behind, but we'll work to get caught up. First off, we start with call to order, District One.
District One, Patrice Horseman, good evening, everyone. I am here virtually, and great to be with you all.
Thank you. District Two, Heronie Mavasquez, Supervisor District Two and current Vice Chair. District Three.
Good evening, everyone. Tammy Antiveros, District Three.
District Four.
Good evening, Judy Begay, District Four Supervisor.
Thank you. And District Five. All right, thank you. Now, our public hearing, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 2025-33, establishing the Lockett Estates Domestic Water Improvement District and appointing David Howard Hayward, Edward L. Weeby, and Agnes Drogi as the interim Board of Directors of a three-member board to serve until elections are held. And with that, I'll pass it over to our county manager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez and members of the board, and I will turn it to Lindsay Daly, our clerk of the board, who has internally helped us manage this Domestic Water Improvement District DwiD process. So, thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, Manager Bertelson and Vice Chair Vasquez. On May 27, 2025, property owners through their attorney, Mr. Jeffrey Crockett, filed a petition addressed to the Board of Supervisors for the establishment of an improvement district to be known as the Lockett Estates Domestic Water Improvement District, and that's by statute. So, this is in Supervisor Horseman's District One area. As statutorily required, we set the hearing date, which is for today, because that has to be done within 40 days of the board receiving the petition. We sent out notices to the property owners that are included in the district boundary to make them aware of this hearing, and then we also had to publish the notice of the hearing twice in the local newspaper, and again, state the address of which the hearing is going to take place, as well as the date and time. We have not received any comments or concerns regarding the proposal for the DwiD, and the state authorizes the board to grant the petitioner's request to establish the district boundaries, to designate land included therein in the boundary under the proposed district. You can see in your packet under the staff report, it talks about what needs to be included in the petition to the board, so that's outlined for you there, and they have satisfied those requirements in their petition. And then also just to note that Deputy Assessor Casey Dormin is on the meeting virtually, and they assisted in confirming that at least 51% of the property owners included in the district boundary signed the petitions in support of the district. And also, the Recorder's Office has confirmed that the three board members being proposed to be the interim board members for the district are registered to vote within the district boundaries, and so are qualified to be board members. And I will leave it at that. We do have Mr. Crockett here to present on behalf of the applicant in the community, if there's any questions for Mr. Crockett.
Yes, if we could please have Mr. Crockett come up to the podium and address the board.
Thank you. Chair Horseman, Vice Chair Vasquez, members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Jeff Crockett of Crockett Law Group, PLLC. I'm here tonight representing the petitioners who are seeking to form the Lockett Estates Domestic Water Improvement District. Let me just tell you a little about Lockett Estates. Lockett Estates, oh, before I do that, let me just mention that Mr. Hayward is here with me, who is the person who verified the petition, and also Adam Whitman, who manages the Lockett Estates Homeowners Association and knows a lot about Lockett Estates. So, Lockett Estates is a platted subdivision within the larger Lockett Ranches Master Plan Community. CCNRs were approved and recorded for Lockett Estates in 2000. Lockett Estates is also subject to the CCNRs of the Master Association, Lockett Ranches Owners Association. Construction of homes in Lockett Estates began in 2005. Of the 16 lots, 14 have residences. Two lots are currently vacant, but construction on one of those two lots is anticipated to begin within the next six months or so. The water system for Lockett Estates started as an ADEQ-regulated private water system owned and operated by the Lockett Estates Homeowners Association and identified by ADEQ as System AZ0403175. In 2020, the water system was updated to an ADEQ-regulated public water system, which remains, again, under the ownership and operation of the Lockett Estates Homeowners Association. The proposed Lockett Estates DwiD will purchase, own, operate, maintain, repair, and improve the existing domestic water system. The existing water system includes a well registered with the Arizona Department of Water Resources as well, 55-583957, also a 50,000-gallon storage tank, and an underground distribution system. The proposed district is located on the east side of Fort Valley Road, along both sides of North Quintana Drive, in portions of the southeast quarter of Section 4, Township 21 North, Range 7 East. The boundaries of the proposed district are not wholly or partially within the boundaries of the existing service territory of a public service corporation providing domestic water service pursuant to a certificate of convenience and necessity issued by the Arizona Corporation Commission, or within the boundaries of a proposed service territory of a public service corporation with an application currently pending for a CCNN before the Arizona Corporation Commission, or filed within a year prior to the filing of the petition to form the DwiD. A map certified by the Arizona Corporation Commission evidencing these facts is attached as Exhibit D to the petition, which demonstrates that there are no certificated water companies currently or proposed in the area of the Lockett Estates DwiD. As described in Exhibit B to the petition, the proposed district will include lots 1 through 16 and tracks A, B, and C of the amended final plat of Lockett Estates identified as Book 110, Map 14, and the records of Coconino County. The proposed district includes lots 19A, I'm sorry, the proposed district excludes lots 19A, which is Assessor Parcel Number 110-14-19A, and Lot 19C, which is Assessor Parcel Number 110-14-19C of the amended plat for Lockett Estates. These properties are part of the plat, but they're excluded from the boundaries of the proposed district, and a map showing those boundaries is attached to petition as Exhibit C. Exhibit A of the petition contains the signatures of 11 of the 16 property owners within Lockett Estates, as well as the signature of the Lockett Estates Homeowners Association, which owns Track A and Track B. Track A is Quintana Drive, and Track B is the property where the existing well and water storage tank are located. There's a third Track C, which is a small triangular sheet piece of property that's owned by Lockett Estates LLC. The petition satisfies the requirements of ARS Section 48903, as it is signed by a majority of the persons owning real property within the proposed district, and the owners of 51% or more of the real property within the proposed district boundaries. And as you heard from Ms. Daly, that that has been certified by the county as well. The petitioner's request that the district be formed or be governed by an initial Board of Directors comprised of David Hayward, Edward Weeby, and Agnes Drogi, each of whom are residents of Lockett Estates and qualified electors in Coconino County. The petitioner submits that the public convenience, necessity, and welfare will be promoted by the establishment of the Lockett Estates Domestic Water Improvement District, and the real property to be included therein will be benefited by the district's purchase, ownership, operation, maintain, maintenance, repair, and improvement of the water system. Specifically, the district will benefit as follows. Local control and governance. DWIDs are governed by a locally elected Board of Directors comprised of property owners within the district. This ensures that decisions about water management are made by the community that served. The second benefit is a reliable water supply. DWIDs are designed to provide a consistent, reliable water supply to residents, which is crucial for daily life and property values. The third benefit is cost-effective operations. By streamlining operations and leveraging local expertise, DWIDs can often provide water service at a lower cost compared to larger utilities. Fourth benefit is infrastructure development. DWIDs have the authority to construct, improve, or purchase water infrastructure, ensuring that the community has direct access to modern and efficient water systems. Financial flexibility is a benefit. DWIDs can utilize various funding mechanisms, including grants, loans, and bonds to finance water projects. DWIDs can independently set rates. They can set and adjust water rates as needed to cover costs and maintain their systems without requiring approvals from external regulatory bodies like the Arizona Corporation Commission. Additionally, the rate structure does not include the return on investment component of a for-profit public service corporation, so quite often, they can serve at a lower cost to the customers of the DwiD. And a final benefit is a community focus. DWIDs are designed to serve the special needs of their community, making them responsive to local concerns and priorities. As you heard, the petition was submitted to the county on May 27, 2025. It was verified. The petitioners represent and acknowledge that the petition, one, constitutes a binding obligation, two, has been validly authorized and executed as required, as verified in verification attached to petition, three, it meets the majority requirements of ARS Section 48903, and four, as a request that the Board of Supervisors of Coconino County establish the district boundaries as depicted on Exhibits B and C of the petition. So, in light of all of these things, the petitioner's respectfully requests the Board of Supervisors enter its order declaring the following: that the petition for the establishment of the Lockett Estates Domestic Water Improvement District meets the majority requirements of ARS Section 48-903; that the public health, convenience, necessity, and welfare will be promoted by the establishment of the district, and the real property included therein will be benefited by the purchase, operation, maintenance, repair, and improvement of the existing water system; that the petition conforms with all applicable legal requirements relating to the formation of a DwiD and establishment of the boundaries of the DwiD as described in Exhibits B and C of the petition; that in accordance with ARS Section 481011 and the series that follow, the district should be governed by an elected Board of Directors, and that the Board of Directors shall consist initially of David Hayward, Edward Weeby, and Agnes Drogi; that the first election for at least two of the initial members of the Board of Directors be held on the date of the countywide general election in 2026, with subsequent elections being held in each even-numbered year on the date of the countywide general election in that year; that in accordance with ARS Section 48915, the district be authorized to incur expenses and debt for which the district will be liable; and finally, that the county perform such other and further acts as required by law. Before I close and answer questions, I'll just mention that your Before I close and answer questions, I'll just mention that your clerk of the board, Lindsay Daly, was very helpful in helping us through this process and figuring out kind of everything we needed to do. We have reviewed a copy of Draft Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Dash Thirty Three, and I don't have any comments on that draft resolution. So with that, I would be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I think we are, I believe we have to go into, Clerk Daly, do we have to go straight into public hearing first, or can we ask questions? Okay, Supervisor Antiveros.
Thank you. Very simple question on the district boundary, when it's talking about excluding Lot One or Nineteen A, that's a self-exclusion, right? That was a property owner that wanted to be excluded?
You know, I might need to ask maybe Mr. Hayward or Mr. Whitman on that. The difference is, those two properties are commercial in nature, and they're on the highway, and they're not currently, they've never been connected to the system, and to my knowledge, they've not been, they've not requested to be connected to the system, but I don't, I'm getting a nod that that's the case, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I was just checking on those boundaries and saw that, so I just wanted to confirm that this was what is intended.
This, that's what was intended. They were, they did not request to be included, and we purposely submitted boundaries that did not include those two properties.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Hey, are there any other questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Horseman.
I do have some comments, however, I will make those comments at the end of the public hearing on this.
All right, are there any more questions? All right, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Now we will go into public hearing. The public hearing is open. We'll now take comments. When you're called on to speak, please announce your name. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please make sure that your comments are directed to the topic. Clerk Daly, please explain to how those here in person can provide comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair. At this time, if there is anyone that would like to provide comment for this public hearing item number sixty-four regarding the proposed D W I D, you can come on up to the podium, and we'll provide three minutes per commenter. And it looks like we have no one here that would like to provide comment.
All right, thank you. In that case, the public hearing is now closed. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Supervisor Horseman.
Yes, and thank you. I appreciate hearing from legal counsel for the D W I D and had an opportunity to talk to a member of the proposed board for that D W I D. And I would just like to note, for the record, and based on the information as presented by Clerk Daly, is that, in fact, the petition does meet the statutory requirements and our requirements for the formation of the D W I D. There has been no comments or concerns that have arisen. This is even after this matter has been published twice in the newspaper and an opportunity for the public to respond, as well as, of course, here today at the public hearing. The boundaries, in fact, have been presented, have been reviewed by our assessor, and have been accepted as appropriate district boundaries, and that fifty-one, actually much more than 51% of those living within the boundaries have signed the petition. At this point, I know that in the past, we have encouraged these D W Is, and the reasons were already enunciated by legal counsel there, but the bottom line is, the D W Is, in fact, do provide an opportunity for community or local control over their water source. It is and provides a reliable water supply for this community. It does provide them cost-effective operations and allows them to do water infrastructure development that benefits them and their neighbors, and it allows them, in the future or now, quite frankly, financial flexibility as they proceed with their well and a reliable water source for their community, allows them, of course, to independently set the rates for their D W I D, for their water and their water supply, and, as you've indicated, it's community-focused. So I believe that this D W I D meets the statutory requirement, meets the requirements here in Coconino County. I do not have any further questions. I've looked at all the materials. I want to compliment the applicants on a great job of presenting it, getting it to us, and of course, also our Clerk Daly for her constant vigilance and assistance to make sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed when we're doing, you know, these complicated procedures, and making sure that the public is kept informed so they're able to complete the statutory requirements, which is what's been done here. So I'm in favor of this D W I D. I know you, Mr. Vice Chair, may have some other comments or questions from board members, but I am very much in favor of going forward with the formation of this D W I D, and will be making a motion to that effect after comments.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments by board members? Supervisor Bagay.
Yes, I just want to thank you for the presentation, and also my colleague, Chair Horseman, for doing an in-depth review of the Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Dash Thirty Three, and to establish the Lockett Estates Domestic Water Improvement District and appointing the board members as stated, and until the election takes place. So I just want to say thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Fowler.
Some of the questions I had about, you know, forming a water district was basically answered. You know, Coconino County, we had started, helped start the Kachina Water District. We carried that for quite some time, and then finally, they were at the point where they could be, they could do the district themselves. And so in this case, it looks like you've got it all figured out, and know how you're going to be approaching it, which is really good to know, you know, knowing where the finance is going to come from, your flexibility, your board, and then having the, your finance already set up, and having the whole community be together as a homeowners' association and say, this is good for us. Sometimes we do get applications, and we, and then at the last minute, the group usually will, sometimes will withdraw because they were not able to go through the full process. I know this is a lot of work locally, and working with, and going through the process, so, and I'm really happy that you have done your homework and been able to move forward on this, so thank you.
All right, I think that's all comments from board members. I would just like to say congratulations, because over the four years that I've been on the board, there are very few D W Is that come to us, and the process always seems like it's pretty complex, and it takes a lot of perseverance. So congratulations for being able to put together the presentation that you have and to have this resolution here before us today. So with that said, may I have a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Dash Thirty Three, establishing the Lockett Estates Domestic Water Improvement District and appointing David Howard, Edward Weeby, and Agnes Progie as the interim board of directors of a three-member board to serve until elections are held. We have a motion by Chair Horseman. Do I have a second? I have a second by Supervisor Bagay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please indicate by saying nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations. Then.
Thank you for being here. Really appreciate all your hard work on getting this done, and look forward to its continued success, so thank you.
Now, the following budget adoption items are public hearing items. After staff presentations, I will open up the public hearing and ask for comments from the public for each public hearing item. Next item, Item Sixty-Five, Public Truth in Taxation Hearing: Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Six Coconino County Primary Tax Rate of point four eight three zero per one hundred of assessed valuation, and a total primary property tax levy of eleven million, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and five hundred and seventeen dollars by a roll call vote. This is a decrease from the current rate of forty-nine point four four dollars per one hundred assessment valuation levied in fiscal 2025. And with that, I'll hand it over to our finance department.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and chair and members of the board. Just so we have a process overview, we have a series of items related to budget adoption on the agenda, but before we go into our first truth in taxation hearing, which will be a public hearing, we're going to present information on the fiscal year 2026 budget, which touches on all of the items, the rest of the items, number sixty-five through seventy-five. So what you see on the screen is information, to start that presentation, that is really going to address all the remaining items on the agenda this evening.
So our first slide is just a reminder that tonight is really the culmination of activities that have involved the Board of Supervisors. There were two weeks of in-depth budget discussions with our county departments and with other entities, where we discussed budget assumptions, the revenue outlook, budget challenges, and the county manager recommendation for the budget in detail. So, you know, for the benefit of any public, members of the public that are watching, this is the final step in a very elaborate process with the board that, where the budget has been discussed in depth. So nothing is new for consideration this evening with the board, and in fact, all of those meetings are available for anyone who's interested in going back and watching them. On June third, the board adopted a tentative budget. The budget that is being presented this evening is a match to that tentative budget that was already adopted on June third. And by adopting the tentative budget on June third, that allowed us to notify the public of tonight's final adoption, provide that budget to the public as required by statute, and then give the opportunity for the public to come and make comment this evening on that budget. So we have followed all of those steps. Our fiscal year starts July first, and then on August twelfth, we will bring back tax rates for adoption for all taxing entities as a formality and a requirement by state statute, and that will include some of the tax rates that we will discuss this evening. So we're going to cover both budget highlights, and then we're going to cover truth and taxation information in this presentation. So budget highlights, the main thing, balanced budget, I think that's important to everyone. And then on the next few slides, we'll talk about the different areas of the budget, including the stability fund that we already adopted earlier this evening, our capital initiatives, and our focus areas. So for the stability fund, again, just as a reminder, this was the fifteen million dollars of a committed fund balance using cash we have on hand. It will be an annual evaluation of that balance, and the board does need to take action before we can actually use those dollars. So at this point, it's a set aside, and then in order to operationalize that into the budget, we would be coming back for a vote of the board to allocate that within the budget. But a reminder again, that it just provides a little bit more stability for our constituents, for our service delivery, and avoids those reactionary changes that could be due to natural disasters, loss of funding, or other economic impacts. We'll have slides as far as the makeup of our budget later on, and we'll see how important the economy is really to the Coconino County budget compared to some of our peers. So really, what this does is facilitates continued strategic decision-making. Also included in this budget are investments in capital. We have major capital initiatives that are both internal facilities-related and public-facing facilities. So the Tribal Nation Service Center, that funding continues in this budget, a joint operations center to help with emergency response and management. We have some internal facilities plans, our J L District Medical Facility renovation. The Public Works Department still is continuing an aggressive road maintenance plan funded with the road maintenance sales tax dollars. We're all aware of the flood control district projects, and that continued work is a result of recent fires and post-fire flooding that has been occurring, and then parks and recreation When we look at other investments in this budget, again, this was discussed at length during those board budget meetings with our departments, but the county manager's recommendation really focused on a few areas, and one of those is service continuation. So for, again, for the benefit of any members of the public, we have some information on the slide with one of those service continuation investment areas being department operating budgets, and that recommendation to increase those operating budgets by five percent for a C P I increase. We also have increasing cost of utilities, which is one of the core costs to operate the county, and so we had service continuation investment in the form of utility budget enhancements in those departments, in three departments. Finally, for service continuation, we had some limited-term positions that were set to end at the end of this fiscal year, and we can see on this list that there's another year extension that's recommended in the budget for those positions. Another area of investment for this budget focused on essential tools, the first one being motor pool vehicles. We know for many of our staff, the motor pool vehicle is like their office. If we think of our sheriff's deputies who are out on the roads all day long, or some of our other positions, where travel is a really important part of the position, whether that's community development inspectors or assessors in our assessor's office. So this next item focuses on enhancing our motor pool investment and making sure that our county employees have the tools they need to be successful and perform the duties of their jobs. The next one for essential tools is software. We also know how important software has become to operating many of our services within the county, and so this investment does focus on the cost, the rising cost of software. Meeting our statutory and contractual obligations is another investment area in the fiscal year 26 budget. Some examples of that, of a contractual obligation, maybe our co-location services with the City of Flagstaff, or a statutory obligation would be to hold an election when elections are called, so we'll see items along that nature through various I G As and things that are on this list of investments. And then the last part is continuing capital plans and new capital plans and renewals. So we see some new investments in parks and recreation projects and facilities projects to maintain our facilities, maintain our existing facilities, and some other small capital. So capital plans and renewal is our final area of investment in this budget, and all of that comes together to make the budget recommendation that you have before you. So for adoption, what you have are budget schedules. Those budget schedules are in a format that is provided to us by statute from the Arizona Auditor General's office, but the statutes, the schedules themselves don't tend to make a lot of sense without context. So what we've done in the next few slides is break this out into some graphics to make it a little more visual, so we can connect with our budget and what's included. We look at the budget in two ways. First, all funds, all of our funding sources, whether they're restricted or whether they're general fund, and the second way we'll look at the information is specifically to the general fund. When we look at all of our revenue sources on this pie chart in front of you, we can see that federal grants and state shared revenues there in green is a very significant part of our budget for fiscal year 26. But I'd also like to point out that thirty-four million dollars of the forty-nine and a half presented in that area are related to flood control district projects and the federal funding that is helping to offset the cost of those projects in our community. A more routine amount is closer to that fifteen million dollars of federal funding, but still a significant piece of how the county funds the budget. We also have county sales tax, which includes our general fund sales tax, our J L District sales tax, and our road maintenance sales tax up at the top there in that blue section, followed by state shared sales tax in orange. So that's over a third of our total budget, coming from an area that is dependent on sales within Arizona. So that's really a volatile revenue source. It doesn't have as much stability as something, say, like a property tax that you can also see on this side. But here are all of our funding sources that are included in that budget. And when we also consider other resources available through fund balances, it gives us total available resources of five hundred and four million dollars. On the expenditure side, again, for all funds, this is the breakout of how all of the dollars in the budget are utilized. On the expenditure side, again, for all funds, this is the breakout of how all of the dollars in the budget are utilized. Um, personnel being the top, um, expenditure area of our budget. Um, but again, capital, because that capital investment that is continuing, that is a significant part of the budget for fiscal year twenty-six as well. We can see that in that purplish area. The other way we look at the budget is by the services we deliver. So this really, this chart is probably my favorite chart of all of the charts in this presentation, because this really tells the story of the services we provide, and it's our full representation of services, again, regardless of the funding source. So we have, in our total budget, we do get restricted funding sources that help offset the cost of things like highways and streets through our HERF dollars or our road maintenance sales tax dollars, or our flood control district, um, or even our health services. Um, there's some partial funding beyond the general fund from other restricted sources. When we look at this chart, we can see, um, that court and probation and sheriff and jail is a major, um, investment that we have. So public safety and, um, things related to public safety in the community is a very large part of the budget. And that top brown core services, if we look at the definition of core services, that's very encompassing of a lot of things. It includes all of our statutory offices, such as the Board of Supervisors or our assessor and our treasurer and our recorder's office. It also includes our internal services, emergency management, developing, community development, uh, for building and zoning. So there's a lot covered by that fifteen percent of the budget, but it's a very reasonable part of our total budget when we think of how much support is coming in that area and how it's then supporting the rest of that pie chart. So just looking at, again, our budget in total, so it's a balanced budget. All funds expenditures, so we're comparing to fiscal year twenty-five, the year we're just wrapping up. We're going from a budget of four hundred and eighty-four million to four hundred and forty-three million, so about a forty million dollar decrease. There's two primary drivers of this, first being our capital debt payment, um, that we will retire this year. We are ending the capital debt program. That was an expenditure limit management initiative. Um, also, some of our flood control district projects and some of our federal pandemic money is decreasing. So our unawarded grant line is decreasing, and unawarded grants is that placeholder for grants that may be on the horizon that we may be able to obtain throughout the year. We know that that will be less available than in prior years. As we look at similar information for the general fund, um, it's important to keep in mind that the general fund helps supplement things that don't have dedicated revenue sources. Um, and the general fund is the flexible dollars that the county has to invest in anything that the county can, any area in which the county is allowed to provide services. So when we look at the makeup of the general fund, we can see the volatility. As you look at that greet, or that blue and that orange, um, part of our pie chart, we have county sales tax and we have state shared sales tax, um, that is making up about two-thirds of the revenues in the general fund. So that means if there's economic fluctuations, especially negative, um, economic fluctuations that impact spending, the county is very susceptible to revenue downturns in our general fund revenue streams as a result. Um, also in the general fund, then we can see that lighter blue, which is our property tax and associated, um, any associated interest and penalties for delinquent payments. So a very small part of what supports the general fund, but a very important and very stable part of our general fund revenues. Again, taking the same two looks at expenditures, so the first one for our general fund is how those dollars are broken up. And the important thing to note here is mandated payments. That's that dark green on the pie chart on the left. So over, um, over eight million dollars of our general fund budget is dedicated to mandated payments where the state has come and said, "We would like you to contribute to this initiative, and you don't have a choice, and we'll take your revenues if you don't." Um, so it's things like, um, long-term, the long-term care for healthcare costs, um, or the county's proportional impact of alt- or access cost, rather, which is essentially federal Medicaid. Um, so mandated payments is something that the board doesn't have any discretion over, and we have to allocate that in the budget, and it continues to grow as a part of our general fund budget year over year. Um, we also have transfers out that go to support our maintenance of effort for our jail district and our public health services district. We support some of our other, um, county departments where state funding is maybe not sufficient enough to cover the full costs of some of our court programs, for example. That's what other transfers represent. And then debt service transfers for our pension refinancing. So when we look at the makeup of the general fund, again, this helps supplement areas that don't have their own dedicated revenue streams. Um, but we can see that most of the general fund goes, again, to public safety. Court and probation and sheriff and jail together are about fifty-six percent of the general fund allocation of resources. Um, and then we can see that those areas that don't have as many, um, dedicated revenue sources then receive more in general fund compared to other sources like those core services we talked about. When we bring the general fund together and talk about highlights, like, we have a very small, less than a one percent increase in our recommended general fund budget. And this is a full budget that includes all contingencies. It include, it includes budgeting for that stability fund. Um, so we go from a hundred and sixty-six million to a hundred and sixty-seven million of budget for the general fund. So before we move on to the tax information, I wanted to pause and see if there were any board questions or comments about the budget as it, um, has been presented this evening and in those schedules.
Do we have any questions or comments from board members at this time?
Oops. If I may.
Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, and I think one thing, just to highlight, and we talked about this earlier, is, you know, just, uh, for us, the board, in our quest to remain and continue to be fiscally responsible, um, we can see that, given the vulnerability of some of our revenue sources, um, we have set aside that twenty-five percent reserve fund, if you will, for the rainy days and emergencies. And now, again, that additional fifteen million one-time stability fund. You know, recognizing, uh, the, um, volatility of our revenue sources and the volatility of, uh, basically what we're looking at this next fiscal year. So I want to highlight that. I, I want the public to understand why we are doing what we're doing and why we are withholding, um, as a reserve, uh, so much of the funding, uh, is to get us by these very difficult times, and hopefully, um, hopefully this too shall pass. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, uh, thank you. Thank you, Siri. And I just want to add also the, um, mandated funds. We are, uh, aren't the arm of the state, uh, government. And so, uh, the state will, um, mandate that we, uh, we pay certain amount for certain services. And now there is a, um, more and more discussion from the federal government that it will, uh, transfer its responsibility over to the state, and then from the state to the local governments, and we're the local government. So that is very concerning on all areas, in healthcare, in education, in the emergency response, uh, and just go down the line, transportation. It is very, very concerning. So for that reason, we continue to advocate against that and being able to, um, we, we have to stabilize and make sure our future with our budget and being able to provide the services that we have to, that we, we provide. Um, we are very conscientious on how we allocate our dollars. At the same time, really trying to take care of our employees with high, high, um, living costs with the, um, with the challenge of being competitive with other agencies. You know, those are great challenges that we face here. But, um, so providing the service is what our main goal is, and we're able to, um, develop this budget. And just want to thank our staff for working on this and being able to, um, get to where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Baguette.
Yeah, um, I just want to say that, um, hey, first of all, Siri, thank you. Um, uh, when you're looking at pie charts, um, that tells a, uh, a story. And I know that about what percent of the salaries, um, is our overall budget for general funds? Um, fifty, it's over fifty percent.
Uh, so, yes, uh, thank you Supervisor Baguette and, and Vice Chair and Chair and members of the board. So we can see graphically that it is about fifty percent of the operating budget that is for salaries and wages, which really is our hands-on service delivery in the community, our employees who are providing those services, um, out to the public.
And, um, I know that, um, they say that, you know, if you're spending over half of your funds just for salary, then it cuts into the services that are supposed to be provided for, um, the people out there. So, um, I'm just kind of, um, thinking, how many employees do we have? Um, are, how many vague, I don't know if what we're doing with vacancies right now. I think, you know, we're trying to save some dollars, and we're trying to figure out how, and, and maintain services at the same time, and certainly, you know, um, paying our staff, that what they should be paid. Um, there's a lot of, uh, things that go with that, but, um, I'm, uh, as a board member, I was kind of a little concerned about us spending. I'm thinking that about fifty-four percent of the dollars that we get in general fund is being used for salaries. Uh, I think, you know, we really take, take a look at our personnel. Um, I know that there's, um, um, ways of bringing down, down that percentage, you know, with not the people that are employed now, but, you know, for, uh, positions that may, um, maybe have been vacant for some time, or just anything that can be done. So I just want to voice that here also, um, the other thing is, um, I guess I didn't tab it, but anyway, that's one of the, um, main things I'm, I'm concerned about as a, as a board member. And, um, I know that the services are badly needed. Um, and, um, I know that, you know, we're trying to save costs at the same time, same time we're trying to, uh, pay the people the, the amount that they, um, that they're supposed to be paid at. And we're still, we've been behind for a long time, and we're finally catching up. But, you know, it seems like with the cost of living, everything is just kind of going up again. So, um, I just want to say that, um, I am concerned that over fifty percent of our, our funding is, um, used for salaries. Um, and, uh, just want to, uh, probably get more information later on, you know, but I just want to, uh, bring that to, bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from board members, and then we'll go to county manager. Supervisor Antiveros.
This being my first budget, um, that I've worked through, historically, what has been the percentage that has gone to salaries?
Yes, so thank you Supervisor. Um, so this is very consistent. We have not, uh, modified our allocation of expenditures, uh, very significantly over time as a county. On the general fund side, it is a little more heavily on salary and wages than when we look at the total. Um, but for, um, Coconino County in particular, if we look at the service, services provided by the general fund, um, you know, I, I appreciate the comments about the personnel, but, um, I also think that for Coconino County, service delivery is in the form of, uh, personnel. If we think of sheriff's deputies, the sheriff and jail expense part of the pie chart, for example, that's deputies, right? When we think of court and probation, um, that's court security officers, that's, uh, judges, and, you know, the support staff to operate the court system. And so, uh, this, to me, does represent service delivery, and I think Andy.
Yeah, 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 it's been about the, the same for the many years that I've been involved in the budget. And I think in, uh, Coconino County, I have a mantra, good people equals good service. And so that's the public service that we provide to the community, the people that, that we're talking about of those salaries, sheriff's deputies, public works, road maintenance workers. Uh, and then we have our court system, uh, juvenile probation, adult probation, uh, legal defender, public defender, county attorney's office. I will say, and I think Krista's here with human resources as well. Some of our leanest departments are finance, human resources, those internal services. The general fund has been a bit higher, but remember, we utilize the general fund to leverage other funds. So we utilize the general fund to, um, uh, pursue those grant opportunities at the state and federal level. And that's the whole reason for the stability fund this year, the federal uncertainty. It's our way of providing stability through that uncertainty. So, um, I, I know that it's always easy to look at, oh, that, that's what we're paying, uh, for, uh, salaries. It's fifty percent. I know, and, and I've, uh, been public works director, I was budget manager here, uh, many years ago, that it's an investment in the people that's providing those services. Now, the other major investment is the tools for the job. And in public works, that would be your road maintenance equipment, which is hugely expensive, and the costs have gone up historically. A road grader's half a million dollars, right? Uh, the tools for the job for us is our laptop computers, our desktops, uh, our phones, et cetera. Uh, the tools for the sheriff's office is really your motor pool vehicles, and that is a huge part. And quite frankly, we're behind in that, and we need to ensure that our sheriff's deputies have the proper, um, equipment. And that includes our motor pool vehicles as well as their duty officers, uh, out, uh, where that they utilize for the job. So, uh, we have a thousand employees in Coconino County, uh, in total. And so, uh, fifty percent looks like a significant investment. But when you look at the services that we provide, uh, I, I, as your county manager, believe that that's well-balanced.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler.
Yeah, I, I just want to add that all the years that I've been on the board, that, um, going through budget, this is the way it is. It is so true, like birth certificate. It is our staff that are helping to fill out those applications, especially the late birth certificate. We're the only county that does that in the state of Arizona. Other counties do not, um, do the full, um, application and process with the late birth certificate. So that's just really significant. The, um, adult probation, they're across the county. They're the ones that are meeting and having to, um, counsel and being with these, um, individuals. So I think it's really important. Um, the main concern every year is always the unfunded mandates, and that's from the states. With the unfunded mandates, the state may not be able to pay, uh, for, um, service or, like, the, the judges, we pay for part of their salary now. Um, they, uh, so, and then we have division seven now, and that was like, oh, oh, we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that. But, you know, the services needed. Um, the adult probation, the state pays, um, less, uh, salary, but we want to be able to be competitive, so we pay more. So those are services that are, um, that we provide. And the unfunded mandates is always such a concern because it takes, it, we have no choice but to pay for those. When the federal government is, should, and hopefully never happens, transfers its responsibility to the state, the state's going to be, um, shifting those dollars to the counties. And counties, we're always trying to, you know, save ourselves from unfunded mandates. And it's really important that we, um, we really pay attention to, um, the services that we provide. And our employees are very important. We don't want them to be overworked. We don't want to make, we want to make sure that they have the right, um, uh, benefits. And we want to make sure that they're, they're, they're providing the, um, they have good work environment and be, being able to provide the service that is necessary for our residents. And, and even the, um, even visitors that come here, our court system, our, our, or law enforcement and what we see, the providing services, uh, many of it is provided to people that are traveling through. So I would just add that.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler and members of the board. And I'm, I'm reminded of all of the, uh, presentations that we had in May with all of the departments. And when we talk about the criminal justice system in, in its entirety, we talk about efficiencies in government. We do fund the judges' salaries, Superior Court, as well as the Justice Court, and the county funds right to a fair trial, both the prosecution side on the criminal activity and the defense side on the legal defense. Um, so, uh, all of those phases of, of that entire criminal justice system are funded by the county. And, and again, I go back to all of those presentations that we had with all of our departments that really, and I think Judge Reed, our presiding judge, really did a great job of working with us on efficiencies in those divisions. Uh, with that, we have our diversion courts, our recovery court, uh, has been hugely successful, our veterans court, our mental health court. So really, So really, in an attempt to keep people out of our jail recovery and pathways program using the opioid funds, leveraging those funds to help people re-enter our community and, and become productive members of everything we do. So again, a really great presentations that we had in May with our department. So thank you Supervisor Fowler.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, one moment. We have Supervisor Antiveros, Supervisor Brigade, and then Chair Horstman.
And mine will be very quick. I just wanted to comment because I think it's relevant at this time when we're discussing the presentations that were done in May. There were quite a bit of numerous requests that were made that were denied. And I think that it's important to talk about this, that there were some hard decisions that were made. And there were some noes that were given. And I just think it's important that we, that I state this, that information at this time. So that's all I was going to say.
Thank you. Supervisor Brigade?
Yeah, I just want to say again that, you know, I, I'm not saying anything contrary to the current staff or anybody that's in this position now. I'm thinking about down the road. These vacancies, I don't know how many vacancies you might have. Probably need to go back and check with each one of the program managers, directors, whatever it may take, you know, that's what I would like to see, to ensure that, you know, we're, you know, we're staff right, but you know, we're just not having people go and our budget is cut in that area and they're still being, you know, just put back on. You know, things like that could happen. I've been in administration for 52 years and I see a lot of this thing, these things that happen. So, but I do, you know, appreciate all the presentations were done. But being a board member, we need to be, be aware, you know, that as you've seen, you know, the budgets are being cut and then where are we going to go and how are we going to deal with that? So it's best to start now to really look at those positions or anything that are just sitting there idling. So I just want to say that that's what I'm talking about. Thank you. And then the other thing is, I found that thing here. I guess. I know we've made some hard decisions in our presentations that were done. And I know that we've been really looking at the jail under the sheriff. And I'm really, I was really concerned about the traditional component of that and where we were just kind of leaving it aside and not doing too much with it. And I'm reassured now today that, you know, this is, these things are happening, starting to move along. And, you know, we, we need that, especially if we have 55 to 60% of our, our, our people that are incarcerated are Native, are Native Americans. So I just want to say, I'm going to thank the sheriff for that. And, you know, that hopefully, you know, we continue, you know, with that, within the system here. So that was the other one that I wanted to talk to. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Horstman.
Yes, and thank you. And, and, you know, I think just the discussion of the board just shows this seriousness and how we have taken this and how, how we have taken this whole budget process. And first and foremost, I think we do need to underline that we are not in this budget expanding services. When we went forward for this budget for this year, this was a bare bones, we've got to get by with what we can type of budget and still provide the essential services to our community members. And that's the approach we took. Supervisor Antiveros is 100% correct. There were a lot of noes. First of all, departments came in and were told that this is a very lean budget year. Do not ask for new monies for new programs and projects. And I believe that most of those departments, if not all of the departments, followed that directive. And they came in with bare bone budgets. And I will tell you, I did not see that there was any extra employees anywhere. As a matter of fact, where a lot of our noes were, were because we were told by many of these departments that in order to get the job done, they felt they needed more employees. And we have basically said, we get that, but this is not the year. You're going to need to do what you can. You need to cross train, you need to work together, you need to get the job done with less. And unfortunately, we've been asking our staff to do that for a really long time. And we hopefully show our gratitude is, is by making sure that we keep current on a competitive salary with competitive benefits and, and that we show our support in that way. They show their support to us by providing the highest quality services to our community and our community members. And by the way, we're a county. What is the purpose of a county? The purpose of the county is a service provider. If you look across the country at counties, at the service providers, you're going to see that in fact, the vast majority of budgets are spent on employees, are spent on salaries. Why? Because this is, in Coconino County and all counties are service oriented and they rely on a reliable workforce to be able to deliver these services. Coconino County does it probably better than anyone. And, and, you know, public service is what we do. That's our motto. We live it and our employees live it. So I don't want there to be any concerns by the public, nor have I seen after spending hours and hours and weeks and months going through this and working with the department, that there are idle employees out there. Everybody is doing their job and then some. And there are not extra employees or extra positions out there. And, and quite frankly, we are, I think this is a lean and mean budget. And I hope it's, that, that the public understand that we are not expanding this budget. We are not expanding services. We want to be able to maintain the essential services our community needs and have depended on. So I just want to make that very clear in this. This, this is a very lean budget. So thank you.
Thank you Chair Horstman. And, and again, I would like to just, just mention that, you know, we, we look at it over 1,000 employees and, and over 50% of our budget's on salaries. But we have to take in consideration a couple of different things. And that's the constant increase of living here locally and not just in flagstaff, but throughout the county. And then also just how we constantly have to keep our compensation package to par. Otherwise, we potentially lose several key staff to other agencies in the area who are paying more. And it's particularly has happened in law enforcement, but also in other areas as well. And so it's really important that we note that while it is close to 50% of our general fund, it's maintaining our capacity to provide the services to our public at a level that we have as our revenues projected moving forward shrink some. And so this is what we have come together through discussion. Again, I'll go back, we had a month, you know, three weeks or two weeks of budget hearings. They're all available for the public online if you'd like to watch them and understand how we got to this point. But I am in favor of, of this budget or this, this presentation up to this point because of the fact that we've gone through and we've wrestled with this and we've talked about the different angles and the different revenue sources to ensure that we have the proper budget to take care of our staff and provide the services that Coconino has provided. Not expand services, but also not reduce services, but try to maintain as close to levels possible. So thank you. And with that, I think you can continue.
Great. Thank you Vice Chair and Chair and members of the board. So all very good points about this budget. As we move into our next section, we are going to talk about our four truth and taxation hearings that are on the agenda for this evening. We have a truth and taxation hearing for the county primary property levy and then for our three secondary property taxing jurisdictions. And we'll explain each one because this is a statutory requirement, although it may not mean tax increase in the way that people think of a tax increase. And so we'll walk through each of those. But first, just a little background on Coconino County and our revenue sources. So this is the Coconino County primary property tax rate in comparison to all the other counties in Arizona. You can see us way over there on the left, that low one in red. And we can see that we're not only the lowest, but if we compare to the other end of the scale, we're, we're in some cases the lower, the lowest by a factor of eight times in terms of the rate differential in counties. You know, one thing we hear sometimes is that the cost of living in Coconino County is more expensive than say Pima County. But if we do the math on that, you know, we're, we're really looking at a cost of index ratio of 5%, 10%, not 800%. So just putting this into perspective, even when adjusting for differences in property values and cost of living, Coconino County's primary property tax rate is incredibly low. There's a lot of reasons for this, but mostly it stems from this board of supervisors, prior board of supervisors for Coconino County being very fiscally responsible and being very limited in what they've done with property taxes over time and then changes in legislation that came in and said, because you didn't use the taxing capacity that you had, we're now freezing you at this lower amount. So kind of penalizing, if you will, the counties that had those lower rates that were being very conservative with their budgets and with how they were spending taxpayer dollars. So again, Coconino County, lowest primary property tax rate in, of all the counties in the state. Then when we look at all of our taxing jurisdictions together, so this includes the flood control district and the library district and the public health services district, we are the third from the lowest. So again, we can see that scaling all the way down, third, third from the end, Coconino County for all of our rates combined. So for what a taxpayer is paying for county services in Coconino County, it is very low compared to what a taxpayer, a tax, a homeowner rather, would pay in other counties in the state. So that's just an important thing to set the stage for why we're doing the tax hearings that we're doing this evening. Going back to this, we're the lowest, we're going to stay the lowest. And in fact, that rate is going to go down next year. Although we will be doing a truth and taxation hearing about a tax increase, our rate will be decreasing further next year. And I'll try to explain that as I go through the presentation, but it can be a little confusing. So as we walk through the rest of these truth and taxation hearings, we wanted to address a sample property. So this is a real life property and we're going to use this as our example as we walk through the truth and taxation information for each of these districts. What this tells us though, is that our taxable value, I'll just, you know, kind of cut to the chase, our taxable value or what someone is taxed on for property tax purposes is not generally going to be the same thing as their market value, it's going to be much lower. So if we take an address in Coconino County and we did this with a sample property and in today's market, we found a Zillow value of $732,000 for a property. When we look at the assessor's website for this exact same address, we see the full cash value, which is a statutorily determined market value, I'm using your quotes, market value for that property. And that's through a process prescribed by the state that the assessor's office has to follow to come up with a, a market value for the property. There's a large difference here in this sample property between what the assessor's office is saying the market or full cash value is and what that property would sell for today according to the Zillow estimate. There's many reasons for that. Mainly that process is prescribed by state statute. And secondly, there's a timing difference, right? So when the full cash value of this property is evaluated, time passes on, generally values increase. And so the, the actual value in real time is going to be much higher than that full cash value. But that's still not the taxable value. This property is going to be taxed on and all properties will be taxed on what's called the limited property value. It's less than the full cash value. So under statute, it's going to be less than or equal to at the most, the full cash value, not the market Zillow value, but that full cash value. So in this case, we started with a market value property of 732,000 and that property is being taxed on a value of $308,000. Okay, so less than half of the today's market sale price for that property is what is that property is getting taxed on. And that's just important for our taxpayers because we would encourage them all to understand the notice of value that's provided to them by the Coconino County Assessor's Office to be familiar with it and to know what their limited property value is and what they're getting taxed on as they consider the tax information that will be presented. Homeowners can find this, property owners can find this on the county assessor's website. So they have a little button you can click on the assessor website where it says notice of value. And you can do searches on your name or your address and find your notice of value. I want to point out here, so this is our same sample property. So again, at the bottom, the Zillow value on this address, 732,000. When we look at what the assessor's information is, we see again, that full cash value for tax year 2025. We've been talking about fiscal year 2026, but we want to focus on tax year 2025. That is county fiscal year 26. So there's a one year difference there. When we look at the 2025 value for this property, we see a value of 487,000 for the full cash. And then again, that limited property or what they're getting taxed on, $308,000. The final component that I'll point out on here is that assessment ratio. So for a residential property, that's going to be 10%. So the actual amount that gets applied to the tax rate is only $30,810. So again, starting with a market value of $732,000, getting all the way down to $30,810 that we're applying these rates to. And all the rates we'll discuss are per $100 of value. So then we further divide by 100. So that's a lot. But again, all property owners can go and look up their notice of value if they can't find the one that was mailed to them. Okay, I'm going to spend a little time on this slide before we go into all of the districts. This is a really important slide. This kind of brings everything together and then we're going to break it apart. So we're focusing on our sample property. You can see that information we've already covered at the top. We covered the Zillow value of 732. We covered the full cash value from the assessor's office of 487. Then we covered the limited property value or the taxable value of 308,000. What you're seeing in the next part there is a comparison for county fiscal year 2025 and county fiscal year 2026 of values. So for Coconino County, the average increase in values for that limited property value was 4.4%. So if we were to look at the taxable value for this property in fiscal year 25, it would have been $295,000 and now it's $308,000. That's an increase of 4.4%. Just intuitively, as values go up, as property values go up, generally taxes increase. That's the nature of property taxes. So we saw that increase in this value. The assessment ratio didn't change, so that assessed value for tax purposes has increased by 4.4%. When we look at the bottom, we can see the county tax rates per $100 of value. And again, we're going to be walking through a truth and taxation hearing saying we're raising taxes on this property for every one of these districts. But I'm going to, when we look at, so when we look at the primary property tax rate, the primary property tax rate is actually going down from .4944 to .4830. So if, if there were a homeowner that had no change in value, they're actually going to pay less in taxes because that tax rate is going down. But because a typical property did have a valuation increase, it's considered a tax increase under Arizona law. So we had a decrease in our rate of 2.3%. For the next two districts, those are secondary districts where the rate tends to stay the same. Public Health Services District has never had a change in the tax rate. .25 has been the tax rate since that rate, that district was established. So again, because the value of this property went up, that taxpayer will pay more in taxes and that is considered a tax increase, hence the truth and taxation hearing. So same concept for the flood control district. And then the library district, which we will go into more detail on, does have a small rate increase recommended for next year. But when we look at everything together on this property that has a market value of 732,000, we expect this sample property to have a total increase in their taxes of less than $23 as a result of all four districts. And then finally, so when we look over to the right, I'm going to work, I'm going to work my way very backwards on that total FY '26 tax levy. So this property worth $732,000 is paying $97 for library district taxes. We have libraries throughout the entire county, we'll go through that. But there's library representation in Williams, in Grand Canyon, various places throughout the county. And we'll go through each one of those when we talk about the library district. But $97 in total, that's the tax to have libraries in the county. This $732,000 valued property is paying $154 for flood control. So flood control projects may be, you know, water diversion. It may be response to flooding that's happened or that is projected to happen, $154 a year. Public Health Services for those services. Public Health Services for those services, animal management, vaccination. Those state mandates we talked about, $77. And then finally, for those county services, so sheriff's deputies for having a court system, for having various services, less than $150 is what this property is paying. So I'm spending some time on this because I just want to illustrate again, the, the county property taxes in Coconino County specifically are incredibly low. A property worth $732,000 is paying less than $500 in total county taxes. Okay. So now we're going to break that apart. And go district, district by district. Okay. So we have four truth and taxation hearings on the agenda this evening. The first one is our primary property tax levy. We've talked a lot about the primary property taxes already. This goes to supplement general fund services like public safety, emergency response, criminal justice, county parks, development and zoning. There's lots of things that happen with general fund resources. And so that is what this levy helps to supplement. And again, we have to, many of, much of what we do is mandated in some way. And we have to provide services to our pop, to our public while maintaining these low property tax rates. Just a quick reminder again, on the distribution specifically of the general fund, this is not all county services. This is the general fund dollars and how they are distributed. Again, these property taxes allow us to help fund things like emergency response when there's a fire or when there's a flood. Or to provide development and zoning services throughout the entire county. Document recording, you know, structures that support all, all functions throughout the county. As we look at our primary property tax levy, we will do a truth and taxation hearing that's in accordance with statute 42-17107. In Arizona, so our property tax levy is limited to a growth of 2% plus new construction. What that means is that we saw previously, our average property value increased 4.4% for the taxable value. That may not be the market average growth. That's just the taxable value average growth. So 4.4%. Because we can only increase our collection by 2%, our rate is being driven down. So property taxes are value times rate equals collections. So when one goes up by more than the allowable percentage of increase, the other must go down. That's why our rate is decreasing, the maximum rate that we can assess in taxes for our primary tax is .4830 for next year. And that is a decrease from .4944 currently. What that means for our general fund is an increase of $228,000. We talked about that operating budget really being about the operating budget in the general fund. Aside from contingencies is under $120 million. So $228,000 of increase there. So the impact there under the truth and taxation requirements is 95 cents per $100,000 of value. Again, this tax is used for any county service or purpose. It is a rate decrease, but we are capped on our levy growth. And it's important to note that when we went through the budget discussions, our balanced budget and the long-term forecast we do for county service stability and long-term outlook includes doing the truth and taxation adoption and, and taking our maximum rate every year because as we've noted, it's incredibly low. If we stopped doing that, we'd be at zero in no time. My rate is so low. So. Okay. So let's go back to our sample property and talk about the primary property taxes for just a minute. So this was our $732,000 market value property. Taxable value, $308,000. That's the limited property value, $308,000, 10% assessment ratio. We've talked about that. So assessed value of 30,000, we can see that in the fiscal year 26 column. We also see the primary rate decreasing from one year to the next. That tax levy going up for this property, impact being $2.91. So this property went from paying 145, a little under $446 in county taxes to a little under $149 in taxes. Of course, we need to note that every property is different. Valuation changes can be different from one location to another, from one year to another. And so we do encourage everyone to go familiarize themselves with the tax year 2025 valuation for their property. They'll also see next year, tax year 2026. But 2025 is the tax year in which we're establishing rates this evening. And then again, because of the, the rule on truth and taxation and how county values have really increased for our property owners over time, we can see, and this is unique to the primary rate. And this would not be the same for other districts that have had, you know, stable rates over time, but we can see our primary rate has gone down from, we were at almost 58 cents in the good old days down to 48 cents today. That's a 10-year outlook. Okay. Our next district is our Public Health Services District. And we can see the services provided by our Public Health Services there on the screen. Clinic services, immunization, epidemic response, medical examiner, environmental health inspections, vital records and animal welfare, including those spay and neuter services. So important health services in the community. When we think about our Public Health Services District, again, we will be holding a truth and taxation hearing in compliance with the statutes. There is no recommendation to the rate. So the current rate is .25 per $100 of value. It's recommended to continue, but again, we saw that our values increased. Therefore, we will be increasing our tax collection. And, and that triggers the truth and taxation hearing and the impact is $1.06 per $100,000 of value. So we use it for county, Public Health Services, not changing the rate. This is just a, a nice summary of that information. And again, our budget, our balanced budget outlook and our long-term forecast maintains the current rate. So with that, we'll go to our sample property. Once again, bless you. This is our Zillow property of $732,000 of value with a taxable value of 308,000 for fiscal year 2026. A 10% assessment ratio, so an assessed value of 30,810. Then we look at our rate, our rate did not change, is not recommended to change from 25 to 26. So this property, by way of having an increase in the value, will have a tax increase from just under $74 to about $77 or $3.25. And again, every property is different, but we wanted to pick one sample property just to make it easy to understand as we went through. So we're showing our sample property once again on this slide.
Good question. Just in the packet that we were given for this, this evening, it says the impact's $3.27, but on your slide it's 3.25. Is there a reason for the discrepancy?
Yes, thank you for that. So we took out the rounding. We fixed the rounding. So you'll notice that on a couple of them as you go through the information on the slide this evening has been updated because so tax rates go out to four digits. And then of course, dollars only go out to the two digits and, and we had to do some, some rounding to really reflect what would actually, like where the cutoff would be. And so 3.25, that's the right amount. I will contribute the two cents myself. Okay. All right.
We have a question by Supervisor Fowler. We have a question by supervisor.
The information I have reflects what has been on the screen. So I don't know if I got something updated or.
Thank you Supervisor Antiveros, if I could just jump in, Vice Chair Bass, because we did work on this on Thursday, I believe. Siri, you and I and Erica went through the slides again, made a, just a few of those modifications based on those corrections and sent that to you. So what you may have in the packet, it has been a bit updated for just minuscule items like that. So again, yeah, we went through it and again, scrubbed it again on Thursday of last week, Siri. So yeah.
So Jen probably printed it for you.
So Jen probably printed it for you Supervisor.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that because I was wondering why some of the slides you showed on there weren't in my packet. I must've had the old unrevised version. So not a problem. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. Please continue.
Okay, thank you. All right. So flood control districts. So our flood control district minimizes the impact of floods on human safety, restores flood plains and watersheds and supports forest restoration. So that is 100% of what the dollars for the flood control district do. Again, in compliance with statutes, we are holding a truth and taxation hearing for our flood control district, but we are not recommending a change to that rate. So again, the district will have a tax increase. It's $2.42 per $100,000 of value by way of having an increase in the assessed value. If all of the dollars collected are used for flood control purposes. And again, their long-term outlook for projects, for forest restoration, for everything that's happening in that district does rely on maintaining that rate of 50 cents and not changing it. When we look at our sample property, and this is one where we did make some, some corrections as well. Our sample property impact is $6.49. Again, this is our Zillow property worth $732,000. Taxable value, 308,000, 10% assessment ratio. And we can see no change recommended to that secondary rate. However, the value of the property went up. And so for flood control taxes, this property will go from paying $147.56 to $154.05. And again, every property looks different, but this is our illustrative property for flood control. And then our last district. So our last district is the library district, which manages the library system. And I talked about this a little bit in the opening comments. This truly is a county-wide district. There are local libraries, not only in Flagstaff, but in Forest Lakes, in Fredonia, Grand Canyon, Page, Sedona, Supai, Tuba City, Williams. We also have a library in the jail and we have a law library that's available to the public for law services. We did meet with the library district during those two weeks of budget meetings and they presented some information on the need for the library district. And with that, there is a rate increase of .02 per 100. .02 per $100 of value that's being recommended for this district. And we'll talk about the services for that when we get to a subsequent slide. But again, so this is in compliance with statute to do the truth and taxation hearing. There is a .02 increase in this rate being recommended. And that impact is $3.25 per $100,000 of value. And what that is going for is to keep the library budget whole for all of those libraries and avoid service reductions in, you know, in our most remote locations within the county as well as maintaining bookmobile services. So that's another area where we deliver library services countywide. The old bookmobile has failed. We do need a capital replacement. And I will note on this one that prior to a few years ago, there had not been any increase to the library district tax rate. It had stayed, it had stayed at the same rate for many, many years, probably more than a decade, where it had not changed. And several years ago now, three or four years ago, the library district came forward and said that reductions in service were going to have to be made. And they did not have reserves for things like replacement of volumes and that equipment that was talked about where the library, where people can come and use library equipment, computers, things like that. They, they were just in a dire strait and they asked for, they asked, actually asked for a 10 cent increase at that point. And knowing how significant that was at the time, the board of supervisors asked for an implementation plan to gradually increase the rate annually to get the library districts to where they needed for full funding to maintain their services while not throwing that impact on the taxpayers all at once upfront. And so there has been an annual increase for the last couple of years now to the library district in order to avoid service reductions within the county. And so that plan is recommended to continue this fiscal year with this recommendation for the rate increase.
Supervisor Antiveros.
Thank you. Okay. I, I know that that was discussed. So in, I know you didn't want to jump to the 10 cents. So where are we in trying to bring that to where the request was? Like how many years into that are we now?
Thank you Supervisor Antiveros. I can follow up with the actual number. I believe we're in either year four or year five of that plan. Yep. So then as we look at our sample property again, the truth and taxation impact for this property is $10. We're looking at our, our Zillow, Zillow valuation of $732,000. Our taxable value of $308,000, our 10% assessment ratio. And again, so a small increase of that, in that rate, this property owner will go from paying $87 in library taxes to $97 in library taxes. And when we bring it all together, when we bring it all back together for all the districts, we can see the full picture. And again, so it's all the information. This is just a refresh, just a different look, but same information on our Zillow value, same information on our full cash value and same information on that taxable value for this property. Again, that assessed valuation change, one year to the next, we looked at this at the beginning. And then we see the rates per $100 of assessed value going from $1.54 to 1.5486 cents in fiscal year 26, which is an impact again of less than $23 in total taxes paid for all of these districts. And again, keeps that tax levy for all of these services for all four county districts under $500 for a property valued at $732,000. So.
Can I just clarify and make sure I understood what you were saying? Even though we are increasing the rate at 2% because of the formula, our rate is actually going down comparatively. But when you put those rates in, the change for this property owner, which is an addition of $23 overall with all the different changes in the tax rates.
With all of the pluses and minuses, that is correct, Vice Chair, that the impact is $23 for this, for this particular property owner. Our, our primary rate is going down, our Public Health Services District rate is staying the same. Flood control is staying the same. And then that two cent increase in the library district.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? In that case, please continue.
Okay, great. So our last slide is just the next steps. So we have, if there's any additional.
Thank you. And this is really good, very important for us, a good reminder for us. And, and yet we have to provide the services with, even with the, our budget decreasing, we still have to provide the services. And at the same time, our federal dollars that we depend on, those are also decreasing, maybe from the state also, because some of those federal dollars go to the state. And that's where we are able to give us some of these grants. So when we talk about budget and we have, you know, these, these increases in our, in our county property tax budget, our general fund, then it really, there's multiple impacts, but we still have to work through and be able to provide the services. And then we have our elects that we work with, our county recorder, court clerk. We have our sheriff, our judges. Those are all county attorney. They're all independent elected officials. And we work with them to make sure that they provide the services that they need to provide as well. And all from this budget. So just want to just emphasize how, how our budget is really, it's really challenging for all the staff. And but provide the highest quality that the county is known for. So I just want to recognize just the work that far of all, all those that are providing these county services. They're just the expertise that we have here in this county is just absolutely amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments by board members at this time? Supervisor Antiveros.
Thank you. And this is really going back to the library by increasing on the library. And I know that you had talked about that there, I guess about five years ago, they said, we need an increase. So there has been an incremental increase over approximately the last five years. And I know that that was meant to be spread out, I believe, did you say over 10 years? Okay. And I guess maybe what I would just like to state in this is for me personally, is, is that I would like to see it reviewed. Like I don't. When we were talking about the library district, one of the biggest reasons that I did support this was because of the failed bookmobile. And the fact that this goes to many of the rural districts in, or rural communities, excuse me, in District Three. Blue Ridge, Forest Lakes. I, I know that I'm forgetting some. It goes all over. And I also asked them to add another one, which is into the community of parks, which I know that we are working on. So I was, I guess what I'm saying is, is that even though I'm supportive of the library increase this year, it does not mean that I'm going to be in support of it for the next five years. I just want to lay that out there now. So that's, that's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from board members at this time?
If I may.
Supervisor Chair Horseman.
Yes, thank you. And, you know, I, I, again, you know, I think that we are showing to the public the time and effort that the county, the departments, et cetera, has gone into to make sure that we remain fiscally accountable and fiscally responsible. we remain fiscally accountable and fiscally responsible to our community and still provide those essential services. When you take a look at what we do and what we have and what we will continue to provide our community members, and given all the uncertainties that have happened, given the financial, the federal grant reductions, and given the state's failure to pay their own way on state mandated programs, and we are looking to be able to provide these continued services, high-quality services to our community with a $23 in total increase for a home, that sample home, that Zillow home of $732,000. I am hopeful that the public will see that they are getting a very good bang for their buck, if they will, because we have worked hard with our departments and hard with our staff to make sure that we are able to provide the high-quality services at the very lowest property tax rates. You know, the numbers speak for themselves where we are in terms of being the lowest primary property tax rate in the state, and the third lowest when you enter in the secondary property taxes. And then you need to compare that is, as a state, the state of Arizona is one of the lowest property tax states in the country. So I, I hope the public can see that we are doing our very best. We hear them, we understand times are tough, we understand when times are tough, how important it is that our local government is able to deliver for them. And I think we have struck that balance here in the budget that's being presented and in the proposed tax that is being presented as well. So thank you, thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other comments by board members? Okay, again, I'll reiterate, you know, we have the lowest property taxes in the states, third lowest with secondary property taxes. While it does appear to be an increase, we're actually decreasing the actual rate, and the impact for a property owner with that value is, is pretty low. And I think for me, this, in this process, what was surprising was the valuation, that the market value, but then the, the cash value that's assessed, which was so much lower, and then on top of that, the limited cash value, which drops that amount even further before it's taxed. And so, again, having, going through that and seeing all the different parts to the formulas, I'm comfortable with moving forward with this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the board. And really Supervisor Fowler's comments reminded me, when, I mean, speaking of our elected officials, one other comment just to make on this is that our county treasurer collects taxes on behalf of all of the taxing jurisdictions. So when property owners receive their tax assessment and they see taxes due to the Coconino County Treasurer, only a very small portion of that actually stays, as we saw, less than $500 for our sample property with Coconino County. Most of the tax dollars collected by the county treasurer are actually distributed by her office back to other taxing entities, public schools, community colleges, cities, fire districts, those are all also on that tax bill. And so we are only, you know, talking about county taxes this evening, and that's really all this board has control over. And to reiterate, this doesn't represent any service expansion, there is no tax increase for service expansion. This truly is just the inflationary increase to maintain the services that we are delivering. So as we look at the next steps for this evening, we have a series of items. We start with our primary truth and taxation hearing, but we do have a truth and taxation hearings for the four districts we discussed. Those all require a roll call vote and a public hearing. The rest of our budgeted options do not require a roll call vote, but they do require a public hearing. We'll be going in and out of the various districts throughout, but all of the information presented in this presentation was intended to cover that, and I'll just have some very brief comments about each district or each budget as we go through. You are being asked to adopt the budget in the format prescribed by the Arizona Auditor General, and so that schedules A through G in your packet, but again, we covered it a little more visually in our discussion just now. So with that, I'm going to stop the presentation.
Okay, thank you. In that case, before we move forward, are there any questions or comments by board members before we move on? Supervisor Ontiveros.
You know, I, I know that everything has been said, but not everyone said it. And I, I just want to be very, very clear that when I cast my vote this evening, that I have taken this very seriously. I have been referred to as cheap, and just, this is just over my life, I am such a fiscal conservative, and I, and I correct and say, "No, I'm frugal." And so I, I have taken this budget process very, very seriously. It has been my first one. And so I will say that I am in favor of moving forward with this tonight because we do have the funding vulnerability, vulnerability due to the uncertainty with federal and state funding. We are not expanding programs or services. The increase in taxes coming through higher assessments, except for the library bookmobile, and I've already explained where I'm at going forward in future years with that. And I also want to just reemphasize that there were some tough decisions made, and there were some noes given to requests that were made. So I know that from someone who has been referred to as cheap, I can tell you that this is a bare bones. I, I mean, I don't know where, and this is an honest statement, I don't know where we could have done any better. And so with that, I can support the budget that is before us this evening.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, in that case, we'll go into a public hearing. The public hearing is open. Please know that comments should be directed to the board. This is an opportunity for the board to hear comments. And while we want to hear these comments, it is not meant to be questions and answers back and forth between the comment, commenters and the board, or the commenters and staff. At this time, we are taking public comment, but we are not answering questions. And so with that, I will hand it over to our clerk to provide instructions on how to give any comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez. If there's anyone here that would like to provide comment, we don't have a whole lot of people here, but we'll ask you to come on up to the podium and state your name for our minutes, and we'll provide three minutes on the clock, so the light will turn green, and then it'll turn red when the three minutes are up. And I do want to note that the board did receive two written comments that are in your board packet prior to the packet going out, and then two additional comments since the board packet went out, which one was from Monday and one was from early this morning. And those comments have been emailed out to the boards that they're aware, and also been printed for the board and provided to them on the dia so that they are aware of all the written comments, the four written comments that have come in regarding the budget adoption. So again, if there's anyone here that would like to come on up to the podium for a comment, if you could please state your name for our minutes, we will set the clock for three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. My name is Bob Thorpe, I reside in Tammy's District in District 3. And I've, my wife and I have been, we've owned property in Coconino County since 1997, the same, same property. Now, I appreciate the presentation tonight, and I appreciate the, kind of the frugal nature of it. The, I think the thing that concerns me is, for us as property owners, we've never seen a decrease in our, in our taxation, our property taxes, even during, for example, like in 2008, when the economy was really suffering and, and home values were dropping. We've never seen a, a decrease in our property taxes. We've always just seen increase after increase after increase. And so it's, it's frustrating as a, as a property owner. Of course, you know, property taxes in and of themselves as a property owners are frustrating too, because if we've decided not to pay our property tax, the government can't actually come in and seize our property. So it's, it's throughout our entire lives, as owning a piece of property, you don't really completely own that piece of property. You are always subject to paying a government entity for, for that property, which is very, again, very, very frustrating as a property owner. So as, as I mentioned, yeah, the, you know, I appreciate that the, like, the primary rate isn't going up. The library rate, I guess, is the only one that's really increasing, but valuation is what hits us every, every year when our property taxes come due. And I know, I, I grew up originally in Southern California, we had Prop 13 there, where voters just decided to really, you know, stop the, you know, the continuation of, of property tax increases. I don't know if that's something that will ever happen here in Arizona, but, you know, I, I would certainly like to see, I, again, you know, I think you're, you're trying to be frugal, but, but again, it, it's painful every year to have to see those property tax increases. Just one other comment, you've made some suggestions about, you know, uncertainty with the federal budget, but no laws have been passed, no laws have been proposed that would shift financial burdens onto the state government, for example. And it seemed a little bit unclear when you were talking about, you know, any kind of changes at the state level that would cause the county to, to have to pay additional taxes to cover services and things that the, the state is asking you to cover. So that was unclear in, in your presentation. Thank you, I do appreciate your time.
Thank you, coming in tonight. Are there any other comments for the board?
Okay, if there's anyone else here that would like to provide comment, again, you can come on up to the podium, and we'll provide three minutes for you to state your comment. And if there is anyone on the stream, we also have a boardcomments@coconino.AZ.gov, which we can pass on to the supervisors. Looks like we do not have any additional comments in the comment box at this time, and there is no one else here at the podium indicating they'd like to speak from the public.
All right, thank you. In that case, I am closing the public hearing at this time. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion to then be made.
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the board. The recommended motion for this hearing is to approve an increase in the primary property tax levy for Coconino County by establishing a rate of 0.4830 per $100 of assessed valuation for Coconino County and a primary property tax levy of $11,733,517 by a roll call vote.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the item as read into the record by Director Mulaney? If so, please state so moved.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Chair Horseman and a second by Supervisor Fowler. The clerk will now take a roll call vote on the motion on the floor.
Thank you, supervisor. When called upon, please indicate that you approve with a vote of aye, or that you do not approve with a vote of nay. District 1 Chair Horseman?
Aye.
District 2 Vice Chair Vasquez?
Aye.
District 3 Supervisor Ontiveros?
Aye.
District 4 Supervisor Begay?
Aye.
And District 5 Supervisor Fowler?
Aye.
The vote passes unanimously with five ayes.
All right, thank you. Next up, item 66, public hearing, consideration and possible action to adopt Resolution 2025-36 approving the fiscal year 2026 bud, final budget for Coconino County in the amount Director Mulaney?
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the board. So as presented, this item is to adopt the resolution, adopting the final budget for all funds for the county in that amount of $443 million. And I will note that all budget information is provided to the, has been provided to the public as required by statute, and it includes all items discussed and presented during the May budget hearings. So with that, the recommended motion is for the board to adopt Resolution 2025-36 approving the fiscal year 2026 final budget for Coconino County in the amount of $443,947.
Are there any questions or comments on the item at this time? Please note, board members, that once the motion is on the floor, we cannot make comments. So if you want to speak on it, please do so now. Okay, in that case, the public hearing is open. Clerk Daly, please explain how to provide comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez. At this time, if there is anyone that would like to provide comment for item number 66, please make your way up to the podium, and we will provide three minutes for your comment. Also, if you're watching us via the stream, you can send an email to boardcomments@coconino.AZ.gov. And it looks like at this time, Chair, Vice Chair Vasquez, there is no one in the room that would like to provide public comment.
Okay, in that case, I am closing the public hearing. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion to then be-
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the board. The recommendation, the recommended motion is to adopt Resolution 2025-36 approving the fiscal year 2026 final budget for Coconino County in the amount of $443,947.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the item as read into the record by Director Mulaney?
So moved.
Okay. We, I have a motion by Supervisor Begay and a second-
Second.
-by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion passes. All right, let me see, where am I? Did I get lost on here? I think I did. Sorry about that. And so- Oh, yeah. We are on 67, but it's not a roll call vote, that's what's messing up, right? Okay, all right. So now, we have finished with item 67, moving on to item 68. May I have a motion to-
Excuse me, we're, we're on item 67.
So we have a motion for 67? I'm sorry, I got, I got mixed up, so-
Vice Chair, if you don't mind, I can make some comments.
Yeah, if you could pull us back to where we're supposed to be, thank you.
Sure.
The ruler didn't work, Lindsay, sorry.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair members of the board. We're on item number 67, which is consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the fire district assistance tax in the amount of $2,429,300. And a few notes on this, as this is one that we did not really discuss as we discussed the budget, this is a statutory obligation of the board to levy a fire district assistance tax. It's a countywide tax, but the dollars that are collected are distributed to all of the fire districts within the county based on a statutory formula. For this particular item, the maximum rate that can be assessed is 0.10 per $100 of assessed valuation, and that will be the recommendation when tax rates are set in August for this district, as that is the amount required to do the statutory distribution of funds to the fire districts in the county. So with that, I'd like to turn it over for any questions that you may have on this one.
Are there any questions or comments on this item at this time? Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, this is one that the, the board does not set the rate, and it is a pass-through that goes directly to the fire districts, and the county does not collect any administrative fees or anything. It, it is just a pass-through funding that goes directly to all the fire districts. Is that correct?
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler, that is correct.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on this item at this time? Okay, are there any other questions or comments on this item at this time? Okay, in that case, the public hearing is open. Clerk Daly, please explain how to provide comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair. At this time, if there's anyone here that would like to provide comment for public hearing item number 67, please make your way on up to the podium and we will provide three minutes. If you are watching from the stream, you can email us at boardcomments@coconino.az.gov. It looks like we do not have anyone here left from the public. So we do not have anyone wanting to speak and provide comment at this time. We also don't have anything in our inbox for board comments.
Okay, in, in that case, I am now closing the public hearing. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion then to be made.
Thank you, Vice Chair members of the board. So the recommendation, the recommended motion for this item is to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the fire district assistance tax in the amount of $2,429,300.
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fowler, do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Supervisor Ontiveros. All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors?
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fowler, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're now the Flood Control District, item 68. Public truth and taxation hearing, consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 Coconino County Flood Control District secondary tax rate of .5000 per $100 of assessed valuation and a total secondary property tax levy of $11,2713 by roll call vote. This continues the rate of .5000 per $100 of assessed valuation levied in the fiscal year 2025. And with that, I'll pass it over to Director Mulaney.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Chair members of the board. I'll just note that, once again, all legal notices have been published and provided to the public related to the truth and taxation hearing we are about to hold. And the impact as published is $2.42 per $100,000 of property value. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments by board members at this time? Okay, in that case, the public hearing is open. Clerk Daly, please explain how to provide comments.
Thank you. At this time, if there is anyone here that would like to provide comment for public hearing item number 68, please make your way on up to the podium and we will provide three minutes for comment. Again, if you're watching via the YouTube stream, you can email in at boardcomments@coconino.az.gov. And at this time, Vice Chair, we do not have anyone present here in the room that has come up to the podium to provide comment. And we also do not have any comments provided in our inbox for board comments.
Okay, in that case, I am now closing the public hearing. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion to then be made.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Chair members of the board. The recommended motion is to approve an increase in the secondary property tax levy of the Coconino County Flood Control District by establishing a rate of 0.5000 per $100 of assessed valuation and a secondary tax levy of $11,2713 by roll call vote.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the item as read into the record by Director Mulaney?
So moved.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Begay. The clerk will now take a roll call vote on the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Again, supervisors, please indicate your vote with an aye for approve and nay to not approve the item. District One Chair Horseman?
Aye.
District Two Vice Chair Vasquez?
Aye.
District Three Supervisor Ontiveros?
Aye.
District Four Supervisor Begay?
Aye.
And District Five Supervisor Fowler?
Aye.
The vote passes unanimously with five ayes.
All right, thank you. Next item, item 69. Public hearing, consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the Coconino County Flood Control District in amount of $47,710,993. And with that, we'll have Director Mulaney present this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Chair members of the board. So again, for this item, this is specific to our Flood Control District. And I will note that we just had the truth and taxation hearing. And so we can see that $11 million of that budget is funded through property taxes. The balance is federal dollars that are anticipated in the district to continue those large capital projects for flood mitigation in the post wildfire flood area within the county. And so there are significant capital budgets, significant capital projects, rather, in the Flood Control District budget for fiscal year 2026. And I would be happy to answer any questions about this item.
Do we have any questions at this time? I do have a question, just for clarification, for my clarification. We have already invested 96 million of completed projects. This 47 million, this is pretty much what's left to do, or at least giving us the capacity or the permission to spend up to that amount on those projects. Is that correct?
Thank you, Vice Chair, yes, that is, that is correct, that there have been significant capital projects and this continues and completes those projects in this fiscal year.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments by board members? Okay, in that case, the public hearing is open. Clerk Daly, please explain how to provide comments.
Thank you. If there's anyone here that would like to provide comment on public hearing item number 69, please make your way to the podium and we will provide three minutes for comment. Again, if anyone's on the stream, you can send comments to boardcomments@coconino.az.gov. And at this time, Vice Chair, we do not have anyone present in the room that has come up to provide comment. And we have not received any comments in our inbox.
Okay, I'm now closing the hearing. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion to then be made.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Chair members of the board. The recommended motion for this item is to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the Coconino County Flood Control District in the amount of $47,710,993.
May I have a motion to approve the item as read into the record by Director Mulaney? I have a motion by Supervisor Begay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros, a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And then, now, we will, may I have a motion to resolve as the Public Health Services District Board of Directors? We have a motion by Supervisor Begay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, next, item number 70. Public truth in taxation hearing, consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 Coconino County Public Service, Public Health Services District secondary pop, secondary tax rate of .2500 per $100 of assessed valuation and a total secondary property tax levy of $6,073,249 by a roll call vote. This, this continues the rate of .2500 per $100 of assessed valuation levied in fiscal 2025. Finance Director Mulaney will present the item.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Chair members of the board. So again, just for the record, I'd like to state that all legal postings have been completed for this truth and taxation hearing. And that includes the impact of $1.06 per $100,000 of value as the truth and taxation impact for this item. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Vice Chair.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on this item at this time? Okay, in that case, it's time for the public hearing. The public hearing is open. Clerk Daly, please explain how to provide comment.
Thank you. At this time, if there's anyone here that would like to provide comment regarding public hearing item number 70, please come on up to the podium and we will provide three minutes for your comment. Again, if you're watching via the stream, you can provide a comment to boardcomments@coconino.az.gov. And at this time, Vice Chair, there is no one present in the room that has indicated they want to comment.
Okay, in that case, I am now closing the public hearing. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion to then be made.
Thank you, Vice Chair members of the board. The recommended motion for this item is to approve an increase in the secondary property tax levy of the Coconino County Public Health Services District by establishing a rate of 0.2500 per $100 of assessed valuation and a secondary tax levy of $6,073,249 by roll call votes.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the item as read into the record by Director Mulaney?
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fowler. Although, let's see. Yes, I have a motion by Director. It's individual votes, I know, but I'm looking on here. I have a motion, who made the motion again? I'm sorry. Supervisor, Director Ontiveros and a second by Director Fowler. The clerk will now take a roll call vote on the motion on the floor.
Directors, please state your vote with an aye for approve and nay to not approve. District One Chair Horseman?
Aye.
District Two Vice Chair Vasquez?
Aye.
District, or District Three Director Ontiveros?
Aye.
District Four Director Begay?
Aye.
And District Five Director Fowler?
Aye.
The vote passes with five ayes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, moving on to item 71. Public hearing, consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for Coconino County Public Health Services District in the amount of $21,243,486. And with that, I'll pass it on to our Director Mulaney.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair members of the board. So I'd like to note, this is our entire legal Public Health Services District budget, which includes the $6 million of property taxes noted in the item prior to this, as well as about $6 million of general fund support. And the rest of the funding coming from either federal or state grants or also district fees for services. So this, this budget is made up of multiple funding sources. I'm happy to answer any other questions about the district budget.
Are there any questions or comments by the board at this time on this item? Okay, seeing that we have no questions or comments, the public hearing is now open. Clerk Daly, please explain to the public how to provide comments.
Thank you. At this time, if there's anyone that would like to provide comment for public hearing item 71, please make your way on up to the podium and we will provide three minutes for comment. If you're watching via the stream and you would like to provide a comment, you can email boardcomments@coconino.az.gov. And at this time, Vice Chair Vasquez, we do not have anyone present in the room that has indicated they want to provide comment. And we do not have any emails in the inbox.
Okay, in that case, I am closing the public hearing. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion to then be made.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair members of the board. The recommended motion for this item is to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the Coconino County Public Health Services District in the amount of $21,243,486.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the item as read into the record by Director Mulaney?
So moved.
We have, we have a motion by Director Fowler, do we have a second? We have a, a second by Director Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. The board will now resolve, may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a second? So we have a, a motion by Director Ontiveros, a second by Director Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors?
So moved.
We have a motion by Director Fowler, do we have a second? We have a second by Director Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Item number 72. Public hearing and consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for Coconino County Jail District in the amount of $57,882,760. Director Mulaney will present this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair members of the board. So we have an easy one. We only have one item for this. There is no truth and taxation hearing as the jail district is primarily funded through a sales tax and that does not go through pub, the truth and taxation process. So with that, our budget of 57 million is made up of approximately $23 million of sales tax. And then we also have a $20 million capital project that's using a combination of fund balance and capital finances included in the budget. And we also have, the remaining balance is a reserve budget similar to the stability fund and the general fund that is budgeted for contingency purposes. So that is the makeup of that 57.8 million. And I'm happy to answer any other questions on this item.
All right, do we have any questions for this item? Okay, if there are none, in that case, the public hearing is open. Clerk Daly, please explain how to provide public comment.
Thank you. If there's anyone here that would like to provide comment under public hearing item number 72, please make your way on up to the podium and we will provide three minutes for comment. If you're watching via the stream, you can email a comment to boardcomments@coconino.az.gov. And at this time, Vice Chair, there is not one, no one in the room that has indicated they would like to provide comment. And we have not received any emails in the board comments inbox.
Okay, I am now closing the public hearing. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion to then be made.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair members of the board. The recommended motion for this item is to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the Coconino County Jail District in the amount of $57,882,760.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the item as read into the record by Director Mulaney?
So moved.
We have a motion by Director Ontiveros and a second by Director Begay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, next, may I have a motion to resolve as the Library District? Oh, wait, may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
May I have a second? We have a motion by Director Fowler, a second by Director Begay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Library District Board of Directors? Okay, there's a motion by Supervisor Begay, a second by Supervisor Ontiveros. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Next item is item 73. Public truth in taxation hearing. Next item is item seventy-three, public truth in taxation hearing, consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 Coconino County Library District second tax, secondary tax rate.
Can, can we get clarification on who motioned and seconded the last item?
I believe it was Director, Director Begay and Director Fowler.
Great, thank you. I just want to make sure we have that clear on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we good, Clerk Daly? Okay. All right, so now, seventy-three, public truth and taxation hearing, consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 Coconino County Library District secondary tax rate of point three one five six dollars out of a hundred dollars of assessed valuation and a total secondary property tax levy of seven million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars by roll call vote. Director Mulaney will present the item.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair and members of the board. Once again, I would just like to note for the record that all legal requirements have been met for holding the truth, public truth and taxation hearing, including publication of the truth and taxation notices that have an impact of three dollars and twenty-five cents per one hundred thousand dollars of value. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments on this item at this time? No, in that case, the public hearing is open. Clerk Daly, please explain how to provide comments.
Thank you. If there's anyone present that would like to provide comment for public hearing item number seventy-three, please come up to the podium, and we will provide three minutes for comment. If you're watching via the stream, you can email to boardcomments@coconino.AZ.gov. At this time, Vice Chair, there is no one present in the room that has indicated they would like to provide comment, and we have not received any comments through the inbox.
Okay, I'm now closing the public hearing. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion to then be made.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair and members of the board. The recommended motion for this item is to approve an increase in the secondary property tax levy of the Coconino County Library District by establishing a rate of zero point three one five six per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation and a secondary tax levy of seven million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars by a roll call votes.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the item as read into the record by Director Mulaney?
So moved.
We have a motion by, by Director, Director Fowler. Do we have a second? We have a second by Director Begay. The clerk will now take a roll call vote on the motion on the floor.
Directors, please indicate a vote to approve with aye or a vote not to approve with nay. District One Chair Horseman? District Two Vice Chair Vasquez?
Aye.
District Three Director Ontiveros?
Aye.
District Four Director Begay?
Aye.
And District Five Director Fowler?
Aye.
The motion passes with five aye votes.
All right, thank you. Next item, item seventy-four, correct? We're getting close, there's light at the end of the tunnel. All right, public hearing, consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the Coconino County Library District in the amount of seven million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and six dollars. Director Mulaney will present the item.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair and members of the board. So I will just point out for this item, the budget is slightly less than the amount listed on the prior item for the tax collection, and that's simply just because one of the distributions goes internally to the county law library through a transfer, and so that's not considered an expenditure to ourselves, and so we are using all the resources being collected by the tax. It's just a matter of how they're accounted for when we have transactions amongst ourselves. This, though, is primarily distributions to libraries, and then also, of course, as just discussed throughout the evening, the bookmobile replacement is included in this budget as well. So with that, I'd take any questions.
Are there any questions or comments on this item at this time? Okay, in that case, the public hearing is open. Clerk Daly, please explain how to provide comments.
Thank you. At this time, if there's anyone that would like to provide comment for public hearing item number seventy-four, please come up to the podium, and we will provide three minutes for comment. If there's anyone watching the stream, you can provide comment to boardcomments@coconino.AZ.gov. And at this time, Vice Chair, there is no one present that would like to provide comment, and we have not received any comments in the inbox.
Okay, in that, in that case, I am now closing the public hearing. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion to then be made.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair and members of the board. The recommended motion for this item is to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the Coconino County Library District in the amount of seven million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and six dollars.
May I have a motion to approve the item as read into the record by Director Mulaney? We have a motion by Director Begay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Director Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. The board will now resolve as the Board of Supervisors, may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors? We have a motion by Director Fowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a second by Director Ontiveros. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Tucson Special Street Lighting District Board of Directors?
I so moved.
By Chair Horseman and a second by Supervisor Begay? Or Director Begay, excuse me. Motion by Director Horseman, second by Director Begay. Finance Director Siri Mulaney, oh, excuse me. Item seventy-five, man, last one of the night. Public hearing, consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the Tucson Special Lighting District in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. With that, we'll have Director Mulaney present the item.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair and members of the board. So it's literally the light at the end of the tunnel, I think, tonight. The Special Lighting District for Tucson is funded by special assessments on the property owners within the district. This is something that they voluntarily voted in, opted into as a special district, and the county establishes a budget using that special assessment funding to pay the utility bills for the lighting district. So with that, I would take any questions on this item.
Are there any questions at this time? Or comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Director Fowler.
Thank you. So this funding for the Tucson Special Lighting District, this is not county dollars, and it's just a pass-through, and that's why we have to approve it. Is that correct?
Thank you, just Supervisor Fowler, and that is correct, although the funds actually do come to the county to pay the utility bills, so we do have staff involved in the process, but other than that, that is our only involvement. There are, there are no resources coming to the county in terms of the special assessment other than what goes to pay the, the utility bill.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to make sure that we're, that's clear. Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or comments by board members at this time? Or directors, I should say. Okay, in that case, the public hearing is open. Clerk Daly, please explain how to provide comments.
Thank you. At this time, if there's anyone here that would like to provide comment for public hearing item number seventy-five, please come up to the podium, and we will provide three minutes for comment. If you're watching on the stream, you can email boardcomments@coconino.AZ.gov. And at this time, Vice Chair, there is no one in the room present that has indicated they would like to provide comment, and we have not received any emails in the inbox for comment.
Okay, I am now closing the public hearing. Director Mulaney will read the agenda title into the record for the motion to then be made.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair and members of the board. The recommended motion for this item is to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget for the Tucson Special Lighting District in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the item as read into the record by Director Mulaney?
So moved.
We have a motion by Director Horseman, a second by Director Ontiveros. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Ontiveros, a second by Director Fowler. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Good, good job. It was a long night. We made it through it. Meeting adjourned.
Great job, Vice Chair. Appreciate it.